The perfect profile for a drive-by shooting. He is not involved in gangs or what have you, but he happens to have brown skin and he lives in a blue collar community in the San Fernando Valley. And that's enough to be a profile, to be shot at by somebody who says, "What gang are you a member of?" And no matter what the answer is from that innocent individual walking down the street or riding his skateboard, he's likely to be shot seconds later. It happens all too often in this city, and we've been trying hard over the last few decades to figure out how we can address this issue. But I'm here to remind all of you that we have ways in which we can address it. The Ad Hoc Committee on Gangs, and I'd like to thank Janice Hahn for her leadership in sitting through hours and hours and hours of testimony and listening to departments and organizations and families and mothers about what it means to them for us to do what we need to do about this. And we have, in fact, made progress.
Acknowledging that these are difficult times and gang statistics continue to rise, District Two Councilmember Wendy Gruel urges an eye vote and says, "Let's save lives in Los Angeles."
It does not matter where you live in the city of Los Angeles today, you are impacted by gang violence, whether it is in the San Fernando Valley, whether it is in San Pedro or Watts or East Los Angeles or Venice. Yes, West Side, Mr. Rosendahl, we know that the gang statistics continue to rise. And as someone who was lucky enough to work with Carla Sanger in the creation of L.A.'s Best, and as Ms. Hahn and I were talking about, she has the same passion she did 20 years ago on this issue, that prevention and intervention is a component of what we need to do to address gang violence. And when I met with Luisa Prudhomme, who came to see me, who lives in Sumatanganga, and when she sat there and cried about her son being killed through gang violence, and that she would do anything to bring her son back, and anything even more so to be able to stop that gang violence from happening and any mother having to go through what she had to go through, she was for it, whatever sacrifice it took, because her son had the ultimate sacrifice, which was being killed in gang violence. And as Ms. Hahn mentioned, the importance of the Chief of Police and that he's indicated we can arrest our way out of this. Yes, it is difficult times, and yes, I had some concerns initially as Ms. Hahn, when we started talking about this a few years ago, about how this money was going to be spent, and ensuring that the efforts particularly of the controller and that we had the reviews that were necessary to make sure the checks and balances were, and that we changed business as usual, that it was not the same programs before that may have been effective but had no demonstrative really reviews and transparency and benchmarking and accomplishments at the end. And if there's any, I think, ordinance or things that we voted on before, this is one of those that has a lot of checks and balances to ensure that the public understands that not only do we care about this issue because it is saving lives, but fiscally responsible programs, and that we are going to make sure that that occurs.
District One Councilmember Ed Reyes says this is an opportunity to make a difference in our city, and urges his colleagues to give the city a chance with a unanimous vote.
And I know for some of you, I sound like a broken record because I keep talking about our housing needs, the violence, the deaths that have occurred in my district and throughout the city. But this is an opportunity where those individuals who don't have to live with this on a day-to-day basis can hopefully appreciate that now you are getting hit with tagging, you're getting hit with graffiti. Now imagine what these resources, these youngsters, can have a place in which they can display their art, they can display their skills, they no longer have to hit your garage door or your street signs or your walls along your pristine gardens and greenways, because now there's a place for them to go throughout the city. You know, Tony talks about his kids, and I appreciate what he's saying. My 12-year-old son, my 14-year-old son, my 17-year-old son, we live in northeast L.A. We live in areas where there's three or four gangs within a half mile of our home. And we talk about, my wife and I, do they have their IDs on them? Do they have my business card on them? Because we don't know what's going to happen that day or that night when they decide to ride their bike. Now, this is a personal discussion that happens every day in my house, but for many, many moms and dads, they can't have the discussion anymore because their kid is already gone. Their son and daughter is already gone. And we could make a difference with 10 cents a day. 10 cents a day. That's what we can do as a city.
Speaking about Augustine Contreras, a young man who was killed in his District 11, Councilmember Bill Rosendahl says this money is being spent the right way, and maintains that intervention and prevention are more effective than suppression.
I will never forget, two years ago, I got a phone call that Augustine Contreras, a kid who had just turned 17 in Venice High School, was gunned down in the parking lot. I rushed to the scene and hugged the mother of Augustine Contreras. I never want to see another kid killed anywhere in this great city. These intervention and prevention programs are as much value to me as they are areas that the mayor has put into his gang-zoned areas. If we don't do intervention and prevention, we will have suppression. We will spend a dollar for every penny we spend now on getting kids out of trouble. Idle mind is a devil's workshop, we know that. We know that we need after 2:00 in the afternoon until parents come home at night, opportunities for young people to grow, to educate themselves, to be involved. That intervention-prevention is more critical, frankly, in my opinion, than all the suppression strategies that just continue the problem. And this is what this is all about. And to dedicate this money, I want to dedicate it in memory of Augustine Contreras, so it never happens again.
Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
12 eyes.
Thank you. Ms...and forthwith...
And with that, the tax to address gang violence through prevention and job training programs will be placed on the November ballot for voter approval. And if approved by two-thirds of the voters, an annual fee of $36 would be placed on each parcel of property in the city, with discounts for low-income seniors. L.A. City View is the government-access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35 or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at (213) 473-3978. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. On Sunday at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending July 11, 2008. On behalf of Cameron Keyes and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
A revolution has come to broadcast television, even bigger than the change to color. On February 17, 2009, television goes all digital. But without an upgrade, some TVs will stop working. Find out what you need to do. Call this number or visit dtvanswers.com to see how you can get free over-the-air digital TV with better picture, better sound, and more channels. See what you're missing. Make sure your TV is DTV.
The Department of Public Works maintains and operates many facets of the city of Los Angeles on all levels, from below it, on it, and above it. Below, the city has 6,500 miles of sewers and 1,200 miles of storm drains that connect to the largest waste treatment facilities in the country. On it, 7,300 miles of streets and alleys with about 200,000 toilets fixed and over 100 miles of streets resurfaced annually. From above, an urban forest of 680,000 street trees trimmed for beauty and healthy, clean air, as well as maintaining the 230,000 street lights that light our 24-hour city. The Department of Public Works helped design and build 32 new libraries since 1998, 76 recreation and park projects, and a national award-winning wastewater treatment plan. The Department of Public Works, striving to make the city of Los Angeles a home that future generations will cherish.
L.A. City View, Channel 35.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council meeting for July 16, 2008. We are here in the John Farrow Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Pursuant to council rules, all members should be in their seats and on time at 10:00 a.m. I want to thank the members who are here, Mr. Wesson, Mr. Zine, Ms. Perry, and Ms. Gruel. We are not expecting Mr. Smith, but otherwise, everybody else is supposed to be here today. So if we could please make a quorum call right now for Mr. Alarcon. Thank you, Mr. Cardenas, for being here. Mr. Alarcon, Ms. Hahn, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Labange, Mr. Parks, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Weiss, we are awaiting your presence. If you will please make your way down as soon as possible. I want to welcome our viewers on Channel 35 who have joined us, and those members of the public who are here in John Farrow Council Chambers, and any friends of ours that are in Van Nuys City Council Chambers as well, where we're broadcast live and where folks can catch us there and testify from our Van Nuys City Hall facility. We are rebroadcast by Channel 35 each evening. We're also available online at lacity.org, where there's streaming webcasts of our council meetings, and past coverage is archived there as well. Finally, you can use your telephone by calling (213) 621-CITY and listen to any of our committee or full council meetings on your telephone. Agendas are available on the back, on the side here, and in the city clerk's office, as well as available online at lacity.org. Those are available 72 hours in advance, 24 hours in advance for our special items, and all items will receive a public hearing either in committee or council. If they have not yet received a hearing in committee and you'd like to be heard here in council today, fill out a speaker card in the back, and that will automatically trigger a public hearing. Just hand it to one of the sergeants-at-arms, and we'll make sure we get that in the mix. Also, if you would like to be heard on items of a general nature that are under our jurisdiction but not on the agenda today, we have general public comments, which we start the meeting off with, and if you'd like to fill out a card, just fill out "Public Comment" in the upper-right corner, and we'd be happy to hear your concerns today. We also have a member of the city clerk's office who is here to assist you, an ambassador to answer any of your questions that you might have on city departments or constituent concerns that you have. So please feel free to ask one of the sergeants-at-arms, and we'll avail yourself of that. And finally, we also have a wealth of information that is available online at lacity.org. I want to thank the members who are here, Mr. Cardenas, Ms. Gruel, Mr. Labange, Ms. Perry, Mr. Wesson, and Mr. Zine. We are awaiting three more of the remaining members. Councilmember Alarcon, Councilmember Hahn, Councilmember Weezer, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Rosendahl, and Councilmember Weiss. If you'll please make your way down as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas, Ms. Gruel, Mr. Labange, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Weiss, Mr. Wesson, and Ms. Zine. We are waiting...well, that constitutes quorum with Mr. Rosendahl. So, Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Okay, Mr. Cardenas moves, Ms. Gruel seconds. Without objection, those minutes are approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Reyes moves, Mr. Rosendahl seconds. Without objection, those two will be approved. If we can...next run through the agenda.
On the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearing. Item number one is a street vacation in Council District 14, and I believe there are cards on that item.
Okay, let's call that special for cards in the public. Next item?
The next item is also a street vacation in Council District 9, and the recommendation for council action is to instruct the city engineer to proceed.
Okay, without objection, let's prepare the roll on item two. Was there a card? Okay, we've been informed there's a card from the public. We'll call number two special as well. Next item?
Next item is item number three, and the Building and Safety Department is recommending that that matter be received and filed in as much as the lien has been paid.
Okay, we'll go ahead and receive and file that. On this one, Mr. Labange or something else?
No, item four, right?
Okay, hold on one second. Let's go, if there's no objection, we'll receive and file number three. And number four, Mr. Labange? Mr. Labange on number four? Mr. Labange? Number four?
Yes, item four special.
You just want to call it special? Okay. Call it special to Mr. Labange?
Sorry.
No problem. Next items, please.
Number five is also a public hearing item. It's a street lighting district ordinance, and I believe 12 council members will be present today. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please, let's hold that, and hold number six as well. Can you go to the next items?
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items seven through 20.
Okay, Ms. Gruel?
Yes, item 17 for Ms. Perry and myself.
All righty. Perry, Weezer on 17. Are there specials, seven through 20, colleagues? Seven through 20. We have 17 called special. If no other specials, go ahead and open the roll, please, on the balance. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 21 through 44. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, let's call 21 special. Any objection to consideration? If not, those are now before us. Do we have cards in the public on any of these?
Yes, I believe there are cards on 21, 28, 31, 32, 38, 39, 42, and 44.
Okay, we'll open and close the public hearings on the balance of those. I could call 37 special.
Item 4...4D?
And, yes, Ms. Gruel?
44.
44 for Ms. Gruel. It's called special for cards as well. Are there special items, colleagues?
And, Mr. President, there are ordinances, 22 through 27. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, I'd like to reiterate our quorum call. The following council members are still late. Councilmember Alarcon, Councilmember Weezer, and Councilmember Parks. We still are waiting one more member to constitute 12 for our ordinance readings. If they will please come down as soon as possible, council members Alarcon, Weezer, and Parks. Yes, Mr. Cardenas?
Yes, items 31 through 36. There is no deadline for council hearing those items. I'd like to put them over until we can get proper presentations done.
Okay, you should have to continue to some date. Do you want to...
Okay, continue them for two weeks, and then we'll confirm with the presenters.
There's no objection, that's July 30. Seeing none, we'll continue those till July 30. Okay, are there specials, colleagues? Are there special items? Seeing none, let's go ahead and take the balance, save the ordinances, and please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. We are, I think, still a minute before the 10:15 hour for the special meeting, so we will return to that. While we are waiting, Mr. Alarcon, Mr. Weezer, and Mr. Parks, we will go ahead and take up our public comment, and our first speaker for public comment is Mr. Zuma Dog. Good morning.
(mimicking Zuma Dog singing) As much as we enjoy your singing, Mr. Dog, if you... The feds will shut down the show!
Can you please tell us what words you have to express today? Thank you.
Oh, oh, okay, so Eric Garcetti is saying that the words must be spoken, not sung.
They don't have to be, but it's a little disruptive with the singing, so if you could communicate, thank you.
Oh, okay, how about if I sing it quietly? (mimicking Zuma Dog singing)
Sir, there's a second warning. If you'll please communicate the ideas that you have. Thank you.
Oh, okay, so once again, it is about communication in the spoken medium.
Yes, we need to be able to communicate.
I say you're violating my federal rights, okay? And I'm going to see to it that I'm...
Mr. Dog, your time is up. Thank you, Mr. Dog.
And my mere presence was newsworthy in the L.A. Times. Thank you so much, and imagine if it all goes to my head. Thank you, Doug McIntyre, at the event for mentioning Zuma Dog. Thank you so much. And thank you to Kevin James last night for mentioning Zuma Dog and bringing up the Mike Corona scandal that I say will be pointing back to City Hall, and for giving me credit for breaking the story that was in L.A. Weekly this week, still on stands today, about the CRA $8 million battle with Councilmember Perry and Cardenas, y'all. Yeah, more coming up. We got gang parcel tax on the agenda item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dog. And always welcome to express anything you'd like, just in a form, hopefully that is not disruptive, that's the only distinguish. James Oda is our next speaker, and then Mr. Armando Herman is our next speaker after that. Good morning, Mr. Oda.
Good morning, Mr. Garcia, City Council. My name's James Oda, the trucking. The Clean Air Act plan the mayor of Los Angeles proposed in the city council approved last month is against many of the Harvard trucking companies and independent owner-operators. We're not against cleaning the air, replacing the older Harvard trucks, but are very much against the concession replacement of the independent owner-operators that become employee drivers. CAP is intended to clean the air and help with the port expansion. Union interests in the replacement of all the independent owner-operators and elimination of many of the Harvard trucking companies, so you have a few trucking companies to make their drivers become unionized. L.A. City Council is concerned with its budget and are here eliminating jobs and work for everyone connected with the Harvard containers. Our tax money is what helps support the city, and you want to eliminate this portion of the city income by eliminating the Harvard trucking companies and the independent owner-operators. It's all for the union. Whatever happened to you that's supposed to be representing the people of L.A.? We are the ones that pay for you and the city. Money that you are going to use in the court silver cap, the people will pay. They are your supporters. Why not work permits for the harbor and no concession? Leave the workforces, independent owner-operators, and not have union employee drivers. CAP is for cleaning the air, not concession or replacing independent owner-operators with union drivers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oda. Our next speaker is Mr. Armando Herman. After that is Rosemary Cohen. Good morning.
Good morning, council members. Today's economy is in a crisis, and we hear it over and over and over. How much more do we have to emphasize the problems of the economy today? Los Angeles says there is no crisis. We're okay, we're afloat, but the citizens of Los Angeles don't want to be afloat. We want to have a grip. Shh, please. We want to have a grip in life, and that grip is not secured by instabilities of what city expenditures and coffers should be spent on. Outsourcing our tax-paying dollars for what benefit? There is no confidence anymore in the financial system. Why the mayor is out with whom? Yes, that's who. The risk of banks today has us all worried. Every one of you should be worried, including myself. The unemployment line is getting bigger, it's growing larger. And although many of you don't want to say so, where are the healthy jobs for L.A. constituents? Where? Where can we benefit with... and for giving me credit for breaking the story that was in L.A. Weekly this week, still on stands today, about the CRA eight million dollar battle with Councilmember Perry and Cardenist, y'all. Yeah, more coming up, we got gang parcel tax on the agenda item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dog. And, uh, always welcome to express any, anything you'd like, uh, just in a form, hopefully that is not disruptive, that's the only distinguished. Uh, James Oda is our next speaker, and then, uh, Mr. Armando Herman is our next speaker after that. Good morning, Mr. Oda.
Morning, Mr. Garcia in City Council. My name's James Oda of the Trucking. The Clean Air Act plan the Mayor of Los Angeles proposed in City Council approved last month is against many of the Harvard trucking companies and independent owner-operators. We're not against cleaning the air, replacing the older Harvard trucks, but are very much against the concession replacement of the independent owner-operators that become employee drivers. CAP is intended to clean the air and help with the port expansion. Union interests in the replacement of all the independent owner-operators and elimination of many of the Harvard trucking companies, so you have a few trucking companies to make their drivers become unionized. LA City Council is concerned with its budget and are here eliminating jobs and work for everyone connected with the Harvard containers. Our tax money is what helps support the city, and you want to eliminate this portion of the city income by eliminating the Harvard trucking companies and the independent owner-operators. It's all for the union. Whatever happened to you that's supposed to be representing the people of LA? We are the ones that pay for you and the city. Money that you are going to use in the court silver cap, the people will pay, they are your supporters. Why not work permits for the harbor and no concession? Leave the workforce as independent owner-operators and not have union employee drivers. CAP is for cleaning the air, not concession or replacing independent owner-operators with union drivers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oda. Our next speaker is Mr. Armando Herman. After that is Rosemary Cohen. Good morning.
Good morning, council members. Today's economy is in a crisis, and we hear it over and over and over. How much more do we have to emphasize the problems of the economy today? Los Angeles says there is no crisis. We're okay, we're afloat, but the citizens of Los Angeles don't want to be afloat. We want to have a grip. Shh, please. We want to have a grip in life, and that grip is not secured by instabilities of what city, uh, expenditures and coffers should be spent on. Outsourcing our taxpaying dollars for what benefit? There is no confidence anymore in the financial system. Why the mayor is out with whom? Yes, that's who. The risk of banks today has us all worried. Every one of you should be worried, including myself. The unemployment line is getting bigger, it's growing larger, and although many of you don't want to say so, where are the healthy jobs for LA constituents? Where? Where can we benefit with taxpayers' money? It's sad to say, this spread of economic, um, plunder is getting deeper. All I ask is that you think of the people that you're interfering with, their lives, hear the cries of the people, not just see them in the streets pandering. Is that the way of LA today? Is that the way the Mexican Latinos have to support themselves today? Asking for more than one or two jobs just to make a living? Is this the new economy of growth for LA? Having Latinos beg for an economy? No. African-Americans and Latinos deserve more, and we want more with our taxpaying dollars. And so my cry to you, Mayor Verigosa, is come back to LA and do something about this economy. Thank you.
Thank you. If I can ask folks to please keep their conversations to a minimum or move them to behind council chambers or outside, please. Uh, it's a little disruptive right now in public comment. Rosemary Cohen is our next speaker.
Um, we have a building in Pico Robertson...
Can we move the microphone down just a little bit? Thank you, we can hear you better. Thank you.
Um, my business is on Pico Robertson, and my next-door neighbor is on violation of renting the place to a cell phone tower, and for twenty years, the neighborhood is asking questions, nobody's answered. I have asked Councilman's office twice, we have gone there, they have promised in three weeks they will give us answers and come, uh, inspect the place, they have never done, so I wonder what should I do? Thank you. I have left my business to come here and take care of this.
What is your address, ma'am?
Sorry?
What is your address? Which part of town?
Fifteen forty-three South Robertson.
Okay, we'll see if we can get somebody from the council to talk to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Rochelle Coretts is our next speaker.
Good morning, President Garcetti, council members. I'm sort of piggybacking off the last speaker. In April of last year, I accompanied Rosemary Cohen to Councilmember Weiss's district office. Rosemary was very concerned about the cell tower placed on the property adjoining her business on Robertson Boulevard. The tower was installed over fifteen years ago, and there had been several strict and limiting conditions placed upon its approval. Over the years, ownership of the building and ownership of the tower has changed. The physical appearance of this tower has also changed, and we have reason to believe that it is no longer in compliance with the original conditions placed on it. We prepared a letter documenting our concerns as well as copies of all the pertinent information regarding the conditions that were in violation. Our request was to have Mr. Weiss's office contact Building and Safety to look into this matter and issue an order to comply if necessary. Last year, Rosemary made several phone calls to Mr. Weiss's office to try to find out what was happening with this matter. None of her calls were returned. We again visited his office in April of this year and spoke to one of his field deputies. We told her how disappointed we were that no one had returned any of the calls, and she assured us that she would have an answer for us within three weeks. The three weeks passed, and then some. I called her, but she was unable to talk to me. I left a message telling her that since it was obvious to us that this council member had no interest in assisting us with our problem, we would go to Building and Safety directly and try and get resolution. So my general question is, why is it that we are courted and promised the moon just before election time, but after that, our elected officials, for the most part, no longer feel that they have any obligation to those that elected them? Do they really feel that our issues are no longer worthy of their time and energy? Why is it that they cannot bother to even return a phone call? Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Our next speaker is Olga Hall.
Is it true that Councilman Labonge had a secret meeting to oppose the historic designation? Application for Griffith Park? If it's this true, it's very important for all the members of this council to understand that you have a great responsibility in your hands, and that you must not, and I repeat, must not support Councilman Labonge's decision. You must support the application for the historic designation of Griffith Park. You need to keep out all of those vultures who want to commercialize Griffith Park for their own benefit to enrich their bank accounts. Colonel Griffith entrusted the city of Los Angeles with the responsibility of keeping Griffith Park for the people of Los Angeles. That was his wish, a place where the people of Los Angeles can escape the chaos of the city and enjoy nature for free. He did not give the park to you, you, or you. Not any of you. Yes, Griffith Park is prime real estate, but it's not yours, it does not belong to any of you. It must have a historic designation so it can be protected from the complete commercialization and from your own members' greed. If you are truly committed to serve the people of this city, you must protect its historic and icons. You asked to be council members, you wanted this job. The time has come to be honorable and ethical in performing this service. It is not time to have issues that affect all of us be resolved in the, they have to be resolved in the light, not behind closed doors and in secrecy. You must support the historic designation of Griffith Park. It is your job to protect the historic and icons of this city.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Our next speaker will be out in Van Nuys. Uh, Mr. Labonge, did you want to say his name?
Question, Mr. Clarification, there was no secret meeting, is that something that I should answer? There was a meeting that my staff held, uh, with city departments on the issue of the designation of the park. But if you listen to her comments, she said there was a secret meeting. There was a meeting in my office. I meet with city departments all the time. This particular meeting was chaired by my chief of staff, Ferdinand White, sir. So there's no secret meeting. But if you want to clarify that, you can, Mr. City Attorney.
Only certain types of meetings are required to be noticed for a public hearing and for the public to attend.
So I can have an office meeting, and I can invite whoever I want. I have a field of staff meeting, I can invite whoever I want.
That's correct.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, Rick Nightengale out in Van Nuys is our next speaker. After that will be Matt Dowd.
Hey, good morning, Rick Nightengale. This is around overcrowding. Obviously, all you people and ladies and gentlemen read the article regarding, uh, that was in the paper yesterday over in, uh, Sun Valley, Pacoima, Panorama City, that how far it's overcrowded, uh, regarding the multiple families that live there and their health conditions and so forth. It's been like this for all the time, people have complained. I, I go back to say, this is your, your job. Years ago, I know it's on the books, that you, you can't have this many people living. My family has an apartment building next door, they overcrowd, there, there had to have been about six or seven kids with four adults in a little two-bedroom apartment. Uh, it's up to you to, to do something regarding this, to make it safe, if it's a condition of, of health, is to take care of it. You have inspectors, if not, this is what we, our taxes are for, for this type of situation. It's, it, it's just unbelievable that people have to live like this, if it's illegal or legal, it don't matter. It's the conditions of health. I realize it's over in the wrecking yards and so forth, where people aren't supposed to live in the first place, but they live in garages and so forth. It's been going on, and, and you people don't do anything about it. I realize it's in a very poverty area, a, and the rent would be real cheap, but is it worth their health to turn around and get sick and, and that stuff? And then they're dying, or they're turning around, or in the hospitals. I'll tell you one thing, I think the best thing, if you ever do, some of you people pull your money and have Laura Chick run for mayor, it would be the best thing for this city. She's the only one that has any gumption to do anything for this city that she's not afraid to step on toes and not afraid to get on you people. You people are turning around, you, you're like a, you're like a sorority or a fraternity. You don't go against your brothers, that's one thing, that's the law, you do not go against each other, because just by the vote, we see it, it's already discussed and decided by time you even get here. So really, we kind of waste our time, but at least we're unloading on you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nightengale. Matt Dowd is our next speaker here. We'll go back to Van Nuys for Miriam Fogleer after that.
Yeah, thank you, Matt Dowd. Uh, big announcement today for Channel Thirty-Five and for City Council, L.A. Times, Daily News, all the media. My impeccably informed sources downtown tell me that Mayor Antonio Verigosa will win reelection in 'oh nine. It's a done deal, it's already over, so anybody attempting to run against him, including Zuma Dog, are barking up the wrong tree. He's not here, so you've got to scoop here, you can scoop Zuma Dog, he's not hearing this, but I'm, it, you will be writing about it in the future. And, uh, so there'll be no Walter Moores or David Hernandez, there's no Magic Johnson. It's Mayor Antonio Verigosa will be reelected next year, it's, it's impeccable source. So I'll be looking forward to working with the mayor. Um, first thing is to mitigate this Venice Beach thing, we got the five hundred dollar an hour attorney in Century Park East. We're ready to go into depositions over something that a federal judge, two federal judges said we already won. So I'll be looking forward to the mayor, my attorney's name is Steve Rody, Rody Viktorov. And the other thing I want to bring to council attention is the retaliation and harassment against us continues at the beach. I'm getting these parking violations weekly from the same officer. This one's for having a vehicle with no plates, but quite clearly, there's an operating permit that's valid from the DMV, and there's two in a row, not to mention, they come and put big chalk marks around the tires, just my tires and the whole street, I got it on video, everything. So, these are all going to the attorney, if you can join the dots, you know where this is all going. Our damages trial is set for January 'oh nine. But I look forward to working with the mayor. You can take that to the bank. Mayor Antonio Verigosa, 'oh nine.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dowd. Uh, Miriam Fogleer is our next speaker out in Van Nuys, and then we'll come back here. We have one card with no name on it. If there's anybody who hasn't spoken, they'll be next. Oh. So, Miriam Fogleer, so go ahead.
Good morning, I know that you're, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I know you've been very, uh, very rude to Zuma Dog, and I don't appreciate the mic being shut down when I want to hear what he has to say, and I think that should be called for, uh, and being rude to all the people coming up here and speaking. I don't appreciate that, and I got my daughter, I got to take care of her, and I got other things to do, and I need people coming down here, and I don't need this, this thing that you're doing with trying to get people to stop coming here. Then that's not good. And, uh, I guess I came in a little late, you must have went through the agenda so fast, you must have figured I was coming. Thirty-one through thirty-six, and thirty-nine, forty or forty-one are all giveaways, folks. And don't vote for the parcel tax, they have plenty of money to, to spend down here.
Ms. Fogleer, for general public comment, we need you to speak about things that are not, that are not on the agenda.
It isn't on the, it isn't on the agenda, the, uh, parcel tax, and that all relates to all these things that you're spending money on, and the fact is, if you want to have a, a talk about it, then you give me more than two minutes. So, um, I think it's only fair to let me speak, and you don't intervene on me. The other day, you had on part number six, you had the other people speak, and you gave them four minutes, so you need to give me more, and you give me back my, uh, minute here, because you interrupted me. And anybody that does that to me, I expect that. And that's why we have the Second Amendment, is because, uh, we have to protect ourselves against human nature. Human nature is to be, uh, bad and do things that are not good for the public, not good for people, not good for each other. It's just the way it is, human nature seems to be having this in their, in their souls. And, uh, this is why we must stop the parcel tax, because this is just the door to get in and pass more parcel taxes, and we need to limit it, and we need to make it only for property owners, and the renters should be paying for it. People who are voting, voting for it, they're not paying taxes, should be paying, should be paying also. Every single person should be paying for this thing. I'm for the programs...
Thank you, Ms. Fogleer.
But not the way you're raising the taxes for it.
Thank you very much.
It's wrong, it's wrong and sad.
Appreciate your comments this morning. Our last speaker is Arnold Sachs.
Hey, Jack Weiss is here. Good morning, City Council, Arnold Sachs. Although you've managed to pass the fiscal budget for this, this year, um, according to the personnel, the department general manager, there's big problems faced the city in two thousand nine, two thousand ten. Um, are you starting to work on a budget for that? I know it seems early, but this will regard personnel. You managed to pass it by increasing fees, and we've found out, uh, through some editorials that the fee that was raised for the police, by the way, how many police do we have approximately now, uh, based on the mayor's plan to hire a thousand? And do those include the general services police and the airport police, which are not part of the LAPD, uh, department? So, are they funded by this trash fee increase? But we need to, we need some answers from this. The MTA is looking to get a half-cent increase, uh, on the ballot. What about projects? What projects is it going to fund? We have, uh, different names for the same project. It would be nice, there's an item on your agenda regarding MLK today, it would be nice if the, uh, person who named the Expo line in, from MTA, put in a, a request for MTA to find out why, all of a sudden, the state legislation created the Expo Authority, the Expo line was the result of the Expo Authority, um, there's the Mid-Wilshire Corridor, how and where and who put together the Expo Mid-City Authority, the Expo, the Mid-City Corridor? How did it get funded? Where is the money going? It's always the same, we need more money, we need more money, we need more money, but when the public asks, well, where is this money going? Nobody has to answer. Not on the agenda, not part of the Brown Act, we don't know. And thank you, Mr. City Attorney, for straightening out the meeting requirements. Please straighten out...
Thank you, Mr. Sachs.
...how an item noticed for a public hearing was suddenly closed to public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. That is our end of general public comment. If we can take up the ordinances we called, uh, special that don't have cards from the public, we have twelve members now, I think that's five and six, twenty-two through...
Six does.
Oh, six does, okay, we'll put a card for the public on six. So five, if we can take that up first, please, uh, if you want to take up the others two, then let's do twenty-two through twenty-seven. And please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, if we can take up twenty, uh, we have a, uh, card on twenty-one, so we'll keep that special. Uh, forty-five, there's been a motion to reconsider, we actually haven't done forty-five yet, so let's call the roll for special meeting, please.
Alakon Cardenist, Gruehl, Han Weezer, Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, fourteen members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first order of business?
First item on the agenda is item number forty-five, and that was, uh, it's an HCD report, has been submitted and distributed to the council members.
Okay, does anybody wish to call forty-five special? There had been a request from one of the council members to reconsider that, we actually hadn't taken it up yet. Anybody wishing to call forty-five special? Once, twice? If not, let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Uh, next item is item forty-six, and that is a closed session item. Do you wish to hold that on the desk and continue that to the regular meeting?
Yes, please, let's hold that on the desk, and we'll continue item forty-six into the regular meeting.
And that would conclude the special meeting, then.
Okay, if we can go back to, uh, items called special, please.
First item called special is item number one, and that was called special for cards.
Okay, our first, uh, item, item number one, John Alexander Hall is our first speaker. After that will be Charles Cowley. Good morning.
Good morning. First, a question is, uh, Honored President, is there anyone else listed as a speaker?
Charles Cowley is next.
All right, I'm here on behalf of Greyhound, um, basically...
Can we just move the microphone down a tiny bit so we can hear you better? Thank you, sir.
All right, I'm here on behalf of Greyhound, um, I'm in support of this measure. If anyone has any questions specifically about it, I'm willing to try to answer them.
For general public comment, we can't do the question and answer, but if there are folks that need to ask you questions, we will know that you're here.
Okay, I reserve my, and rest of my time, thank you.
Okay, uh, Charles Cowley is next. Charles Cowley is next.
Good morning, Charles Cowley, representing the One Santa Fe Project and the MTA for the street vacation. I couldn't hear what the other gentleman said. Was there questions or comments? It was unclear.
I think he was asking whether there were questions. For public comment, we just hear the public comment under the Brown Act. We can ask questions later of anybody that's here.
If there was no opposition, I have nothing to say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody wishing to call this special from the council or be heard, excuse me, from the council on this? If not, we have the recommendation before us. Let's go ahead and please prepare the roll on item one and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay. That item is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is item number two and that was also called special for cards.
Okay. I don't have a card on number two. Is there anybody in the audience who was speaking on number two? I don't have a record of one. Anybody out there, number two? Nope. Okay. We'll close the public hearing on number two.
And that is a street vacation in Council District Nine and if there are no protests, the city engineer should be instructed to proceed.
Okay. We'll go ahead and make that instruction without objection. All right, next item, please. Okay, let's prepare the roll on two and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is item number four. That was called special by Councilmember Labange and a motion has been distributed to the council members for adoption.
Mr. Labange.
This is Johnny's Lucky Lounge on Sunset Boulevard. This is an item that circulates, if they go forth, they did want to convert to a full liquor license, but I don't support. There is many off-site facilities within close proximity. There's schools. Unfortunately, there's a challenge of crime on Sunset that has to be abated and I ask, we instruct the clerk to transmit the termination of the State Department of Alcoholics Beverage Control as required by the findings under the Business and Professional Code, section 23958-4. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Without objection, we have that motion before us. We'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with, and if we can reconsider 45 for Mr. Parks, if we can open the roll.
Could we have 45 reconsidered?
Yeah, that's what I just said. We're going to reconsider that and we'll put it on the queue. Go ahead and open the roll, please, on reconsideration of 45. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
And we'll call that special for you, Mr. Parks. Next item, please.
Next item is item number six and that was called special for card.
Hey, Arnold Sachs on number six.
Yes, good morning again, Arnold Sachs on number six. This is one of my favorites again, another business improvement district. What concerns me about this is that the fiscal year beginning June 1st, 2008, you're hearing this today, I believe today is the 16th of July, which means it's six weeks into the fiscal year, which means I would imagine that the business improvement district was dissolved because it didn't have funding for the fiscal year. Thank you for paying attention. I also like to know that in this item, it states that the clerk will approve, execute and administer a contract between the city and the Chatsworth Business Improvement District Corporation, the nonprofit service provider for the administrative administration of the district. On the 27th of July of June, there was an item, the Hollywood Business Improvement District. They were provided services by the Owners Association. And then the Hollywood Properties Only Owners Alliance was to serve as the Owners Association to administrate the Hollywood Entertainment Business District Property and the BID. So my point is, is that first of all, this one you're hearing today about regarding Chatsworth is six weeks late. Who will be the nonprofit that is overseeing the Chatsworth Business Improvement District Advisory Board? Would that be the Chatsworth Business Improvement District Corporation? Is the Chatsworth Business Improvement District Advisory Board different from the Chatsworth Business, the Chatsworth Business Improvement District Corporation? And if one's a nonprofit, you can be sure that the other one isn't a nonprofit. So just what you have here is a nonprofit hiring a for-profit corporation to steal money from the city.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, your answers and your attention.
And Mr. Sachs, the city clerk, the city clerk who is here to answer those questions, the city clerk's office actually oversees all the bids and has some great answers and information about how the bids work. So if you'd like to avail yourself, Mr. Sachs, of that, please do. The city clerk can give you in great detail the answers to the specific questions as well as how the business improvement districts work in general.
A point of information, and I don't know and I'm not challenging, Mr. President, but I can't hear, I don't know if people could hear out there if your microphone's working, I'm just.
Okay. I'll see if we can get some additional volume. Could you hear that, Mr. Sachs?
You can't. Not as well. Not as well.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Appreciate that. Okay, if we can take up the next item. Okay. Ms. Perry on number, did you want to speak on number six, Ms. Perry? We'll take a vote on six.
No, 17.
Okay. So let's go ahead and prepare the roll on six and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Number 17 and Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And this topic, this item is hail a taxi pilot program. This has been a three and a half year process of getting local point-to-point cab service here in the city of Los Angeles. With the passage of this motion today, people can then go to any street, for example, Main Street, hail a cab to go to lunch. A hotel guest can get a cab to go to the convention center or to the central library or to the fashion district. And for people who want to enjoy downtown's blossoming nightlife, they will be able to do that without driving. People will be able to park their cars and use a cab instead of moving the car around constantly. Local cab service, which is largely unknown downtown for many years, will become a reality again. This is a market-driven concept and I believe the market is more than ready to make this pilot program a success. In the war on transportation, taxicabs play an important role and the role of the taxicab has been reduced over the years as taxicabs have only become long-haul carriers because of restrictions that have been imposed by government. This makes no sense. Other big cities have local cab service and Los Angeles, a major world-class global city, should not be an exception. The city has met with the MTA and addressed MTA's concerns regarding the use of bus zones by taxicabs. This was done at the direction of the Transportation Committee and I therefore move to rescind the request for the joint use of the MTA bus zones with taxicabs because the issue's been resolved. I also want to thank Rita Robinson and Mr. Amir Sadadi of the Department of Transportation as well as Councilwoman Gruel and the Transportation Committee for their support of this pilot program, not only in downtown but in Hollywood. I'd also like to thank Carol Schott of the Central City Association and Hal Bastian of the Downtown Center Business Improvement District for initiating and bringing this issue to us and sticking with the process. This pilot program will provide many benefits to downtown and to Hollywood and I expect it to work very well, so well that I expect that soon other parts of the city will want to adopt it. So thank you very much. We have two individuals at the table. Mr. President, if should they wish to add anything or if people have questions, but otherwise, we can vote.
We've got some other members on the queue. Mr. Weezer also called this special. Mr. Weezer, want to speak? Okay?
Yeah.
You're okay?
No.
All right. Then we will go to next speaker on the queue, Ms. Gruel and then Ms. Han.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Perry, for your leadership on this because there was some confusion in the city about whether you could hail a cab or not. And the challenge was particularly in areas like Hollywood and downtown, there were no stopping zones in a large portion, particularly of Ms. Perry's district, which restricted our taxicab drivers, many of which are here today in support of this effort. Because they were concerned if they stopped, someone hailed a cab, as they're used to in Chicago, San Francisco, New York, and put up their hand to hail a cab and they stopped and that taxi driver was potentially going to get a ticket for stopping in a no-stopping zone during certain times. And so Ms. Perry's effort in both downtown Los Angeles and in Mr. Garcetti's district in Hollywood are particularly areas where we have tourists who come and who are used to being able to hail a cab anywhere. And so the message we want to send today is you can hail a cab anywhere in Los Angeles, even if you're not in these two pilot areas. The difference is the fact that there are red zones that restrict. And I'm not sure if Ms. Perry added this, that the MTA was concerned about bus zones and drivers stopping in those bus zones. And so they came to an agreement with you all, and maybe you can talk to that, Amir, in a minute, about how the stenciling will be in those areas. I know there's going to be training for the taxicab drivers about how it will operate so there's not parking in those areas, but it is more of a drop-off, pickup kind of move like we're used to in many other cities across the country. So I want to, I think CCA, thank them and the taxi industry and DOT and MTA in trying to work out some of those issues in its implementation. If you could just describe how it's going to work on the MTA bus side and just hold my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gruel. Amir Sadadi, Assistant General Manager, Los Angeles Department of Transportation. I'm joined with Tom Drishler, our taxicab administrator. The department stands in support of this pilot program. As Councilmember Perry mentioned, we've been working for many years on this concept and I think there was a lot of confusion that hopefully we cleared up at the Transportation Committee that it is not illegal to hail a cab in the city of Los Angeles. However, the perception of someone potentially stopping in a zone such as a no-stopping or a red curb and potentially being cited was the concept where people thought that that would be illegal. So what we have put together through working with the stakeholders in the Central City Association as well as the Hollywood Property Improvement District is to put a set of protocols together for our traffic officers to be able to adhere to and provide the flexibility to the taxi industry and the taxi drivers to, again, safely load and unload passengers. It's very important to understand this, that this program is not a parking program where taxicabs or taxi drivers would be able to park for long periods of time in those restrictive zones. It is, again, meant for the active loading and unloading, just like many of those other cities that were mentioned, people getting in and out of taxicabs. As this, as the, this board report was approved by the Board of Taxicab Commissions, we had originally included the bus stop zones as one of the zones where taxis could load and unload passengers. However, with further discussions with MTA and as Councilmember Perry's motion discussed, we are taking out that option of taxis being able to load and unload in bus zones mainly due to the safety of both the passengers and the flow of traffic. So what we've done through working with MTA is we will be stenciling the red curbs where the bus stops are with no-stopping bus zones in addition to the red curbs so that it's clear both to the public as well as to the drivers that those are the bus zones where it's not going to work. MTA has agreed to pay for those costs, so this would be at no cost to the city. The city crews will do the work and MTA will reimburse us. In addition to the draft protocols that's before you, we also have put in some performance measures in order to measure the success of this program and that's why it's a six-month pilot program and having the ability to come back and extend it. Some of the performance measures include surveying the drivers prior to this program, enactment of this pilot program, and going back and finding out how often they picked up passengers as street hails, where they did it, and then to be able to go back after a few months after we've done it to see, you know, if that's increased, how it's been working. We're going to reach out to the public through the Central City Association as well as the Hollywood bid to figure out from the public's perspective how that's been working. And also we're looking at the number of citations being issued as another factor. So if the drivers are not adhering to the protocols that are before us and unfortunately being issued citations, then obviously that's another measure we want to look at. As was mentioned, I think at T Committee, the success of this program really lies with the drivers themselves and the public, the demand and supply issues. So once the drivers start picking up the passengers and the passengers feel the ease of getting, hailing a cab, then I think we're going to accomplish what Councilwoman Perry and Councilwoman Gruel, you mentioned about the reducing, you know, vehicle trips into downtown in Hollywood and being able to circulate without your own vehicles.
And it's that seamless system we're trying to create that allows people to take public transportation downtown or into Hollywood but be able to come back. And I think that's really important. And I thank the department for coming back. The two issues that we had in committee were related to MTA and the issue of performance standards and a way to do that. So we look forward to this and again, thank Ms. Perry for her leadership on bringing an issue that was very much, I think, not understood by a lot of people relative to those red zones in the area. And so the amendment that Ms. Perry made will allow us to deal with the MTA and the bus zones.
All bus stops.
All bus stops.
All bus stops.
All bus stops. Okay. And with that, thank you, thank you very much and thank you again, Ms. Perry, for your leadership on this issue. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. We have seven more people on the queue, starting with Ms. Han and Mr. Zion.
Wow. Seven. Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I just really wanted to stand and thank everyone for making this happen. I know I've been meeting with the taxicab drivers on a number of issues over the, over the years, trying to listen to their concerns about how they can better serve the people of Los Angeles. And this is an idea that I think its time has come and gone, frankly. It's unbelievable that we were not able to have people hail a taxi standing on the curb in particular parts of the city of Los Angeles. I love it that it's a pilot program. I think it's going to be very successful and I look forward to the fact that then we will expand it to other parts of the city. Again, tourism, you know, is like the second largest industry in our city. We want tourists to come. We like them to come. We like them to be happy and spend their money when they come here. But it's been kind of a sore point with a lot of people that they don't understand when they raise their hand why the taxis drive by and they come away with the feeling that maybe our taxicab drivers are not friendly or they're rude. In fact, they've been unable to stop and pick people up. So great leadership on this, Ms. Perry. We thank the department for working on this. This is a good solution to a problem that I think will make LA much more friendly and service-oriented to the people that are here. So I just wanted to stand up and give my support and look forward to a successful pilot program. I know it's going to be successful and then looking to expand it in other places in Los Angeles.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Our next speaker is Mr. Zion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of questions. You mentioned DOT. What about LAPD and the officers from that department being informed of this so they don't do enforcement in an area there's going to be a grace period?
We've worked with Chief Bratton on this and we have the, the police onboard. They came to Transportation Committee and they are in support of the program, both in Hollywood and downtown.
How's it going to trickle down to the motor officer, the collision investigator, the senior lead officer, the beat officer? How's it going to trickle down to them? Because if it says no stopping, some of these officers do the citations and I just want to make sure we have a clear definition so we don't have a conflict. Captain.
And you raise a good point. Captain Rick Wall, Central Patrol Commanding Officer. We've been working very closely with the council office to make sure that once, we've been incorporating this into our daily training that this is going to be a pilot program, excuse me, especially with the advent and the development of the new entertainment district in downtown Los Angeles. I personally experienced during the Laker playoffs and the championship games, being approached on, I can tell you, an average of 20 to 30 times a night from patrons leaving saying, where can I get a taxi? Where can I get a taxi? And my response was, you need to go either to the Holiday Inn or you need to go two blocks up the street because those are the only places to get.
I don't have any problem with the program. I think it's a great program. I just want to make sure that our officers aren't citing the taxi drivers who are doing what agreement has been reached. That's my concern. Because you mentioned DOT, but LAPD wasn't mentioned.
Correct. No, we've been working very closely. The chief's office has been very involved in this. We have been very involved in it and we're going to make sure that once, once the final details are hashed out as with this bus stop zone issue, we'll make sure that it gets out and down to the lowest levels so everybody understands what the rules are and we don't cite people unnecessarily.
And the other question is, you mentioned citations. How are you going to be able to determine citations issued to those taxi drivers, what processes they're going to be? In fact, they do a violation. You mentioned monitoring that. How are you going to determine those citations from an individual getting a citation?
That's another good question.
There's no special boxes, my understanding on that.
That's another good question.
I got some great questions about this.
You do.
The captain and I go way back in traffic.
That we do. Well, through, through the franchise permit program, all taxis franchised through the city of Los Angeles, we have their license plate, so it's matching those citations with those license plates.
Okay. So you'll be able to win that plate and connect it that way. Now what do you do with the bandit taxicabs? Now that's my concern.
That's a whole different program that we have a bandit program.
But I can see them poaching where we're trying to do something good for the people and I know we have a problem with bandit taxicabs that are going to be swooping in there and taking away the business from the legitimate taxicabs. What do we do to address that problem, which is going on and on and on and really hurting the legitimate taxicab ministry and hurting individuals who get in those taxicabs that aren't aware there's no license, insurance, registration, something occurs, the meters aren't regulated. What kind of effort are we making since we're going to open this up? And a lot of these tourists, a lot of these people who want to use a taxi, you'll see a taxi, and it looks yellow, it looks green and white, whatever, they flag it down. How are we going to address the banded taxi cabs, which I know we have an inordinate number working in the city of Los Angeles? How are we going to address that so it doesn't interfere with this very legitimate program that's being put into place?
Well, we're going to get word out to the enforcement staff that illegal operators aren't part of this program.
I would hope not.
I mean, we have ongoing efforts with banded enforcement and...
Is that improving? Because I know there was an assessment on the taxi drivers or their cabs to pay for additional enforcement. Is that getting any headway to help reduce the number of banded taxi cabs in the city?
We think we're making progress. We'd like to make better progress, but the numbers of arrests are up more than threefold from before the program started. Come January of next year, our investigators will be doing 30-day impounds of all banded arrests, because we just got legislation passed in Sacramento, so we're going to have greater teeth in the program. But we are getting word out to the enforcement people at all level, LAPD and DOT, that if a cab doesn't have a city seal, they're definitely not part of the pilot program.
And also, we're working on a taxi information pamphlet and book that we can provide to all the publics that explains the differences of what a regular franchise permitted taxi is versus a non-banded program.
And maybe we can do some more enforcement with LAPD, because I know that there are certain officers, and I work some of the task force, that are very knowledgeable of this and go after the banded taxi cabs to cite them, impound, do what they can legally do. A little more emphasis on that might help, especially with this new approach. Because you travel downtown or Hollywood, and there's an inordinate number of those banded taxi cabs that are floating around, and you look for that seal. The average person doesn't even know about the seal.
Correct.
That's one of the problems with education, but maybe it's some more enforcement in that area. A great program. Hope it works out well for everyone. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm done.
Our next speaker is Mr. Labange.
Good job.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
And a question. Thank you very much, Billy. How many cabs we have in Los Angeles?
Twenty-three hundred.
Twenty-three hundred. Are any just going to be concentrating on Hollywood and downtown going back and forth? Or are they going to, how do you think it's going to develop? What do the professionals say?
Well, on any given day, you have a certain number of cabs at the airport and certain cabs working in other parts of town, but there's probably in the neighborhood about 1,000 to 1,100 in the downtown area, another 400 or 500 in the Hollywood area, more in the evening time.
Right. Okay. I just hope we can encourage that. We have, I know that was years ago they talked about jitneys in Los Angeles. You remember that? You remember that at all, Aaron? I mean, that's a long time ago. And looking at Wilshire Boulevard and that aspect of it. I hope we watch it because it can be part of the transportation solutions, because the taxis do serve Los Angeles. I know Carolyn Flowers is here for the MTA, the leader of the whole operations division, and she's okay with this. So I think it's real important. I do think education is key. I do think, although, Mr. City Attorney, if I'm out of line, you tell me. I do believe, and I just mentioned the MTA, that we should have a red car taxi that serves an area around a red line station so people could have probably access within a half-mile, a mile of that area. Will you look at that? Come back to me in the future?
Sure.
I'll do a motion to make you work for it. If you just look at it, give me a call and say it's a crazy idea or a good idea. I just want you to look at trying to connect more with the stations as it is. And I think, Captain, you're right. Sometimes people don't know where you have to go to. I know in my neighborhood, you've got to go to Vermont and Hollywood Boulevard to get a taxi. Now we could just hail, hail, rock and roll, and get one cab there. So I think it's real important. I just want to thank you. And when will this be implemented? How much?
We hope to implement it as soon as possible to take advantage of the tourism that's here now, so based on the mayor's approval, the council's approval, I think we can probably begin within a week after we have the approval.
Great. Okay, and traffic safety is very important, near there and getting on. Will they be able to get on both sides of the cab or just the curb side of the cab?
The sidewalk side.
Side, curb side?
Curb side.
Curb side. Okay, so that will be good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Our next speaker is Mr. Rosendahl.
First of all, it's a no-brainer. Obviously, we have to do it. I want it in Venice. I'd like it on Windward and Windward Circle. You know, we get a million tourists to our beach, a million at least, and they can't find a cab. There's no cabs. There's cabs in Abbot Kenny when the bars are getting ready to close, or other areas in my district where the restaurants and bars are together. You'll see a cab here, or next to a hotel, and they'll move out. But when you finish your pilot, which is a great thing, it's no downside, I mean, it's the best way we need to go. It's part of the mass transit concept, frankly. Not only do we want two or three people in a car, and we want people not to be in a car, but when they need to get somewhere, it's great to have a legitimate cab there to take you there. So you don't need to ballyhoo it. It's got to be done. But when you're finished the pilot, come to me. I want to put one at least in my Venice Beach like yesterday. I wish it was part of the initial pilot, and good luck with it all. Thank you.
Yes, this is definitely meant to pave the way for doing it in other parts of town as well.
Yeah, let's move quickly on it. We want to get as quickly as we can that kind of energy, because I can go to Venice Beach every weekend, which I do, and there's tons of people all over the place, and there are a lot of tourists from all over the world, you know? It's the number-one spot. It's even outdone Disneyland lately in terms of people coming there. So we need to have those cabs up and down and around, taking people around. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have three speakers left on the queue, including myself, but we wanted to make a special recognition of a special guest, a very honored guest that we had here today, Mr. Weiss, if you'd like to briefly recognize that. We'll resume the next speaker, who will be Mr. Weezer after that.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, colleagues, for allowing me to interrupt the discussion. We have some guests from China, and they need to be moving along because they're on a tight schedule. I want to introduce you to Ambassador Wong and Professor Peng Guang from China. The ambassador was formerly China's ambassador to the United Nations. In fact, he was stationed there on 9/11. And the professor from Shanghai is perhaps China's leading expert on Jewish studies. They're here along with a very impressive delegation in Los Angeles this week for the opening of an exhibit at our Museum of Tolerance at the Simon Wiesenthal Center. Councilmember Gruel, who I thought was going to be with me, she's here, she'll join me in the back in a moment, was there at the opening yesterday and spoke at the opening. It's a very impressive exhibit, and it's one of these only-in-Los Angeles things where we can bring together the experiences of the last few centuries in China with the Jewish community, and we do it here in Los Angeles. We're very grateful to have you with us. It's a very impressive delegation, and we're very pleased that China recognizes how important an issue this is and has participated and helped support this effort. In the back, we're going to make a presentation on behalf of the city of Los Angeles to the delegation, and I did just want to introduce them here. So let's welcome them to Los Angeles.
Thank you very much, and welcome, and thank you very much, Mr. Weiss, for that. Our next speaker is Mr. Weezer, then Mr. Reyes, and then myself.
And thank you, Ms. Perry, for your leadership on this. This is tremendous, and as Ms. Hahn said, it is kind of puzzling to tourists when they come to Los Angeles and they could hail a cab in most other major cities, and then they get here and don't know what to make of it when they're not, when the taxi cabs don't stop by. So I think this is a great direction for us to go in, not only for the tourists, but obviously here in downtown LA, we have many more residents who are actually walking the street and sometimes need those short trips to get from one place to another. I was just at a downtown arch walk not too long ago where there were over 5,000 people walking around, looking at different galleries, and downtown is changing, and we're going to need that additional transportation mode to get from one place to another. So it certainly makes sense. And I think as we move forward, all those little hiccups that we see and the reasons why we're not doing it now, I think we're going to eventually work those things out, and we're going to see that moving in this direction definitely outweighs the old way of doing things here in the city of LA. So there's a great direction that we're going in. My question, while I have Department Transportation's attention, is do we provide any incentives for the taxi cab companies to provide or use hybrids as vehicles? Or have we discussed that at all?
That's part of a program that we're, that's in development right now, and we're working with council offices, the mayor's office, and the commission on that issue. It's a very key issue. We're working very diligently on it. We don't have incentives in place at this time, though.
Okay. But that's something that the department is working on, and eventually we'll see at least some discussion of it as we move forward. Okay. Well, thank you very much. I think this makes a lot of sense, and I know there are some downtown organizations who pushed this forward, who brought it to the city's attention, and I look forward to hailing a cab one day as I walk down Broadway. We're working on an initiative right now, bringing back Broadway, put a lot more people on the streets then. And our primary focus should be providing the best and easiest way for people to get around, including mass transit, public transportation, and this helps alleviate that until we have a better transportation system in downtown LA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to have a sense of how we're looking at the, what does the pricing mean when someone hails a cab? With these new areas, you have distances that they're charging by the mile or the minute. I'm not sure what the unit is. What's it costing nowadays to use a taxi?
Well, it's, for a five-mile trip, it could be upwards of about $15. But for a short hop around, say, downtown or Hollywood, it should be under $10 every time.
Under $10?
Yeah.
So how does one who comes from another country, who doesn't speak English, know when they're being housed? I mean, how do you, how do we control that? How's that being policed?
Well, we have the meter rates posted in all the cabs, and the cabs are required to issue a receipt that's printed by the taxi meter at this time. And we do investigations with our staff from time to time where we take rides as secret shoppers to see how well the drivers are doing in terms of issuing the receipts.
So how large is your staff? I'm curious.
Well, we have, we have 12 transportation investigators, and six are dedicated to banded enforcement and about three to taxi cab enforcement, but occasionally the banded enforcement folks do some franchise regulation work. It's not a big staff.
So you got three for how many taxis?
Twenty-three hundred.
Twenty-three hundred?
Yeah.
So it leaves us to inform the public on what are their rights and what to expect and how much they should pay?
Yes.
Don't know how to defend themselves?
Yes. Well, the rates are posted inside each cab, as well as a card that gives them phone numbers to call if they have a reason to complain. And there's also phone numbers that they can call on their receipt.
Is there a way you can share with us, at least in my council office, how to distinguish a banded taxi for folks who don't know what to look for? There's a medallion, there's a number, and folks who are not, again, they're tourists or folks are coming from other parts of the world wouldn't know what to look for. Is there any information you can share with us, a website, some kind of information piece so that we inform people what to look for so they understand that these are banded taxis or if they do get ripped off, how to report them?
Councilmember, as I mentioned earlier, we're working on a taxi fact book. It's a little book that you may have seen in some other cities, so we're working on that. We hope to have that in the next 30 to 45 days, but prior to that, we will share information with your office on all the information you had to ask for. But we are working on a little taxi fact book that can be handed out, could be provided at the chambers, at the tourist offices throughout Los Angeles, which would help the education piece.
And I think that, one, I want to thank my colleagues for getting us to this level. I don't know why we've never done this. It's just, it's too obvious, but we can start looking at rail stations, the light rail stations, the transit-oriented districts. These all become natural relationships that we should be stimulating so that we can get folks using the rail, especially along the goal line. We don't have enough parking spaces at our rail stations, so this will be a big plus for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you, Ms. Perry. I was proud to second this motion and to work closely with you, because Hollywood, I think, is a really critical place for this to succeed for many of the reasons that people have laid out here. You know, I do have my doubts, and I understand Metro's opposition. I do have my doubts of whether it can succeed without the use of bus zones. But what we've been doing very creatively, and I appreciate from DOT's perspective, is taking a lot of the parking meters that during the daytime are used as parking meters and then turning those into taxi zones at night, switching those. In future years, we've talked about maybe doing that with electronic signs, ways that are very clear to our drivers, whether it's a local that comes down to Hollywood Boulevard or whether it's a tourist. But clearly, we want people arriving safely and leaving Hollywood safely, and reducing traffic in Hollywood is a huge priority of mine. 95% of our traffic is through traffic, to be clear. It's not that the resurgence of Hollywood is causing traffic in the area as much as the growth of the city by and large. But we do have to find a way that people can conveniently, especially as we see nightlife come back, and unfortunately, the metro doesn't run late at night, and that's another priority of ours, is to try to get the metro to run later so that people who will take the subway into Hollywood will also have the faith that they can get on a subway to leave. But right now, taxi is one of the best ways, either to get from one point to another at night or to go home from Hollywood. And so I want to thank the Business Improvement District, the Chamber of Commerce, all the people who are engaged and involved in this. But it's the most basic thing we can do in a city, which is to hail a cab safely, make sure that it's safe for that cab driver, that it's profitable for the cab companies and the cab drivers, but that it works for the people. We have, two-thirds of our car trips in Los Angeles are not our trips to and from work. They're everything else that we do. And so when people try to force people onto transit or into taxi cabs or carpooling to and from work, we know that that is mostly impossible for many people. But it's the other two-thirds of trips that we take, to meet a friend for a drink, to meet a friend for a cup of coffee, to go out to a movie, to see a play, to be able to walk to a grocery store and pick up groceries and get home, or take a short cab ride. That is what we want to do, taking cars off the road. Because if we can each do that with even two or three trips a week, I mean, look what the high price of gasoline has done. It gets the roads flowing again to be able to take a couple trips off of the road. We certainly don't want to see the suffering on gas prices continue because it's hitting taxi drivers very hard, too. But appreciate the pilot of moving forward, and I know that Ms. Perry will see to its success downtown. I will work very hard to see its success in Hollywood, and I hope those twin bars of the barbell that are linked together right now by the red line will inspire the rest of the city to follow suit, and we look forward to expanding it to other parts of the city as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alakon, followed by Ms. Perry.
I just wanted to say that this is an easy program to support, although it has some complications. I think it's necessary. I also wanted to say that as the former chair of the Transportation Committee in the '90s, that I think we've come a long way in our taxi service in the city of Los Angeles, and I want to thank DOT for that. Even though my district doesn't use taxis as much as other areas, I think taxi service is an essential element of a service-oriented city and an urban center like Los Angeles. I want to, the other thing that is so good about this particular idea is that it merged from the community. It merged from the Central City Association, the downtown business community, the chambers of commerce, and I think that's the way policy ought to be driven. And of course, I want to thank my colleague, Jan Perry. This is a simple, but I think very essential program to our ability to move people from place to place with the least trouble possible. We, I also, though, know that the committee, and Wendy Gruel in particular, the chair of the committee, are very interested in improving it as we go along, learning about what may or may not work, and then responding as quickly as possible to adjust the system to, as I say, provide the best hail cab service that we can provide in the city of Los Angeles. But I want to commend the DOT on this particular project and particularly on the implementation of this project. So good luck, and let us know how we might have to adjust as time goes on.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alakon. Ms. Perry to close.
Okay, great. Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Madam Clerk, I just wanted to review what was before us and just to clarify my verbal motion that I made earlier to rescind the request for the joint use of the MTA bus zones with taxi cabs, because the issue's been resolved. So if you can restate what is before us so we can take the vote?
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes. Fourteen ayes. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. There has been a request to have item 42 go next. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam President.
Forthwith on that item. Thank you, Ms. Perry.
At last, a representative from EAD and also planning to come to the table. And, Madam President, we have a total of six cards, and I'd like to have those cards go first so
Yes.
our city staff can hear what their comments might be.
Okay. We shall do that. Yes, there is, because a public hearing has not been held on this item. The first, I will call the first four speakers, John Kuhl, Ken Kutcher, Angela Mooney, it looks like Darby, Darcy, and David McNeil. And then we'll call the following. Yes, John.
Madam President, let me just set the context. This is somewhat unusual in the fact that we're asking the city to comment on an EIR that actually is in a county issue that deals with the PXP oil field. And we have a number of representatives from the surrounding areas of Culver City, Ladera, the Baldwin Hills Conservancy that are here to make comments to help us put forth our response during the community hearing period.
Thank you very much. My name is John Keakley, and I want to thank Councilman Parks for bringing up this very important issue. I've been told that the Inglewood Oil Field is the largest urban oil field in the world. I'm not sure if that's technically correct, but I do know that it's large enough to cause a significant number of problems, and yet it's gone largely unregulated by the county for almost 80 years. We're therefore very happy that the county has decided to finally do an environmental study of this field, but we are concerned that the study, as currently drafted, omits to consider a number of critical issues. And we're therefore very grateful that Councilman Parks wants to have the city take a look at this and hopefully provide some good advice to the county. Some of the issues that are not dealt with adequately in the report relate to what they call the risk of upset, which is the risk of some catastrophic explosion or other event taking place on the site. Unfortunately, the Environmental Impact Report says they won't consider anything to be a problem unless it gets worse than it is already. I think I can speak safely for all of the residents within a few miles of the oil field saying that if there's a risk of something blowing up there, we don't really much care whether it's a new risk or an existing risk. We want the county supervisors to be aware of that fact when they draft the ordinance to regulate the oil field. We're also very concerned about air quality. In 2006, there was a large release of gas that forced many people, including my family, to evacuate our homes in the middle of the night, and yet the Environmental Impact Report doesn't even mention that fact, much less study questions like whether deep drilling, which is a new program that PXP started just before the incident and which led to hitting the pocket of gas that caused the problem. The EIR does not even mention this as an issue, much less study whether deep drilling should be further regulated or restricted. So, again, I want to thank Councilman Parks for taking the leadership on this, and I look forward to the city's comments on this important issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ken? Not Ken, sorry. Ken is our next speaker. Ken?
Thank you very much. Good morning. My name's Ken Kutcher, and I'm a resident of Culver City as well. And I'd like to echo Mr. Keakley's comments. I think Councilmember Parks has shown great leadership in bringing this matter forward, and we certainly appreciate that. The city of Culver City is also actively taking a look at pursuing similar comments and being involved in this environmental review process. This is a 750-acre site surrounded by the cities of Los Angeles and Culver City. It's important that all regional agencies are involved in the review of this document. The comment period ends on August 19th, so that date is quickly approaching. And we look forward to being involved with members of the City of Los Angeles's committee that will be taking a look at this and certainly have a number of comments and concerns, some of which have been expressed by Mr. Keakley. I'd like to indicate we do not have an objection to oil exploration. It's a matter of it being done safely, that the operations are done prudently, that hazards are not either exacerbated or created, and that things are done responsibly in this vein. This entire effort began because of an odor emission that impacted my neighborhood. Those emissions have been charted on a map that's in the EIR that would impact a number of different residents potentially. And so, these are serious matters that deserve significant attention, and we'd certainly encourage and support the motion that's been proposed by Councilman Parks. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Angela?
To bring this down a little bit. Good morning. My name is Angela Mooney, DRC, and I'm here on behalf of the city project to urge you to adopt this motion to review the Baldwin Hills Community Standards District, DEIR. The Greater Baldwin Hills Alliance is a coalition of neighborhood groups, homeowners' associations, and community-based organizations representing more than 50,000 households. The alliance is ensuring that Baldwin Hills are clean and green for all generations to come by educating, empowering the community. There have been active oil wells in the Baldwin Hills for over 80 years. Despite that, there have been no studies of the impacts of oil drilling on the human health and the environment. Now, the oil field operator, PXP, proposes to expand operations and drill 1,000 new wells in the next 20 years. This amounts to a new well every week. The alliance has prepared draft community standards districts to regulate the oil drilling in the Baldwin Hills. Community residents are asking the county to create a community standards district that values the community's well-being, conservation, and environmental goals more than a barrel of oil. The alliance's CSD represents a reasonable and prudent balance of private interests and short-term profit and public interests in livability, sustainability, health, and the environment. Some of the alliance's recommendations include eliminating potential health risks and environmental impacts associated with the oil field operations through consolidation, providing enforceable health and environmental protections, including monitoring sanctions and penalties, providing for the cleanup and eventual transition of the land to parkland, as is consistent with the Baldwin Hills Park Master Plan, and supporting residential living, open space, recreation, schools, critical habitats, and improving the current aesthetic of the oil field. Finally, we recommend establishing an oversight from a multi-sector advisory committee that includes community residents. Thank you, and we urge the city council to adopt this motion and support the work of the Greater Baldwin Hills Alliance.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is David McNeil, followed by George Mallory, followed by Scott Zeidman, and Reggie Byron-Jones Sawyer.
David McNeil with the Baldwin Hills Conservancy. Good morning, City Council and esteemed president. Los Angeles has a long history of oil drilling, as we all know. But the juxtaposition of this activity with communities and businesses and schools and parks has been examined in lots of areas, from Signal Hill to Bakersfield. With the Baldwin Hills remaining as the last large open space in the entire Bonner Creek watershed two square miles, our agency seeks to find park equity and improve the quality of life for residents in the city and the county. The Baldwin Hills Community Standards District provides the first opportunity for the public to provide input on how drilling can be cohabitated with the growing population of Los Angelinos. Key issues revolve around public health, safety, and preservation of homes are at stake. The EIR has taken two years to draft, and the residents of Los Angeles, public agencies, and stakeholders have about four weeks to submit comments for consideration before the Regional Planning Commission. Participation in this unprecedented regulatory action is warranted. Neighbors above the drilling site have long suffered noise, vibration, dust, and odors, and the blight of the scarred landscape and abandoned infrastructure must be addressed and corrected. Moreover, the technology applied to residential areas throughout the cities should be instituted in this theater to make the Baldwin Hills oil field cleaner, greener than anywhere else in the nation. At $147 a barrel, it's time to invest some money back in the community. Under the leadership of the state representatives, former speakers, Viergosse and Wesson, the Baldwin Hills Conservancy was created to acquire land and create the largest park since Griffith Park in Los Angeles. The 68-acre Baldwin Hills scenic overlook will be opening, and we can do more. And the incentives for the oil operator consolidate drilling operations in the public view and immediately decommission and safely abandon wells that are not in service will take place soon. The state applauds Councilmember Parks' motion and seeks each council representative's support, as well as the support of our mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. George Mallory, followed by Scott Zeidman, followed by Reggie Jones Sawyer, and then Mihal O'Leary.
Thank you very much. Good morning. My name is George Mallory. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of Los Angeles, currently a resident of Ladera Heights and formerly a deputy city attorney in this great city. As a resident of Ladera Heights, we have a bird's-eye view of what is going on with the PXP oil fields. It's very, very important. We first want to thank Councilman Parks for his leadership role in having the city review this issue. We want to point out that while we all understand that there's an energy crisis and a gasoline crisis in this nation, we have to make sure, and you have to make sure, and we urge you to support this motion, that we're not placing profit and oil companies over people. And we have to make sure that when we look at these issues, that this oil field's been there for a long period of time. It appears that it will be there for the next 25 to 30 years. But over that period of time, we have to ensure that there are regulations that are in place to protect the interests of the residents, to protect the health and the well-being of all of the citizens who have called Ladera Heights, Baldwin Hills, Windsor Hills, and all the surrounding areas home. So, we appreciate your support of this measure, and again, thank you, Councilman Parks, for all of your effort.
Thank you, Mr. Mallory. Mr. Zeidman?
Good morning. My name is Scott Zeidman. I'm a member of the Culver City Board of Education, where I'm responsible for some 6,500 students, as well as 500 administrators, staff, and teachers. I'm here in support of Councilmember Parks' motion and ask that he request that the Environmental Affairs Department review the Baldwin Hills Community Standards Draft EIR report, including but not limited to a first look at the some 5,000 students who are in the potential zone of danger of odor release. The gentleman who drafted the report admitted that he had not considered at one time those 5,000 students in drafting that EIR. On behalf of those students, teachers, administrators, and the residents of Culver City, I ask you to support Councilmember Parks' motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Reggie, followed by Mihal O'Leary, followed by Dr. Suzanne de Benanettis.
Good morning. My name is Reginald Jones Sawyer. I am the former Chair of the Baldwin Hills Conservancy. I'm in favor of the motion for the Councilman Parks to put in. In fact, as the former Chair, I can remember when we were looking at possibly closing a lot of these wells in the next 20 years. We had purchased over 100 acres of land to ultimately turn into golf courses and other passive and active recreational uses. And now we see that PXP, whom we had been working with closely on a lot of these measures, is now looking at opening up possibly 1,000 new wells in an area where we had hoped that one day we would have the largest inner-city park in the country. So, I urge you to go ahead, look at the impacts that this will have on the surrounding communities and others because it is, this park will serve as a beacon for this city for a number of years, and we need to accelerate this becoming more of a park than decelerate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, honorable councilmembers. My name is Mihal O'Leary from the city of Culver City. I want to thank you. I want to thank specifically Councilmember Parks for proposing this. I have a suggestion that possibly we convince the county to work with the cities to form their own CSD and do what Santa Barbara has done, Santa Barbara County has done, instead of using the consultants of the PXP themselves, who I am, I'm not sure it's a good idea to ask a particular group that has interests other than the interests of the city as their main interest. I have concerns about the consultants that PXP have hired, Science Applications International Corporation. They have a questionable reputation, resulting previously in conceding to false claims, resulting in a $1.3 million fine and penalties. Marine research specialists are the group that they're using. Again, I go back to we need to use our own interested parties, other counties, as our main source of research. In this plan, there's no emergency preparedness plan. There's no air monitoring suggested. There's no penalty clause. The map of the affected area includes schools, churches, shopping areas. The January 2006 event was not mentioned. The gases that came out that day were not even tested. I'm concerned that the fixing of the land afterwards and the financial requirements are not even mentioned. There's no compliance audits. So, therefore, I just suggest to you, we don't need another Beverly Hills High School event where in 10 years' time, we're looking at carcinogens having affected our children. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for being here. Dr. Suzanne de Benanettis?
Honorable councilmembers, and Phil, who's the district person for property I own. I live in Culver City, but own property in LA. I am for oil drilling safely, safely. I am for oil drilling safely. As the other speakers have already said, in this EIR, and this is the county's executive summary, there are so many omissions, gaping omissions, that it makes me, it makes me cry literally. For instance, health, there was no baseline study done of lung diseases, asthma, cancer. How do we know if 1,000 more wells operating in addition to the 430 now going, plus the other 600 that are idle, that they're going to start up? 2,000 wells going, what is that going to do to the health of our people? There's no baseline. There's no ongoing audit. There's nothing there to let us know that our health will be preserved. That has to happen. If you read even in the summary, number D4, "No derrick or tank shall be placed within 300 feet of a dwelling, school, or hospital, educational, or health facility." So, 300 feet away, you can start polluting health, hospitals, schools, et cetera. I don't think so. Safety, in 1991, there was the explosion in an oil field, destroyed everything within three-mile radius and caused damage, like shattered windows within 10 miles. There's no safety or evacuation. It's very inadequate. Drilling on the proximity of an active fault line, to me, is going to cause the same kind of event that water caused in Louisiana. We don't need a Katrina done by fire. I urge our two cities, we've formed the coalition of neighbors, and we've done so much research we can help you with, but we need our city officials to get together and sit down with the county and say, Supervisor Burke, you're endorsing me. Let's have Culver City, LA, our people, our lawyers, our representatives, our research, our epidemiologists all work together. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That is our last public speaker. Mr. Parks?
I'd just like to ask our city staff to give us a thumbnail on how they perceive they will move forward so the general public will know what the timelines and how you will go about creating the response for the city.
Dee Allen, General Manager of Environmental Affairs. After looking at this motion, we have decided to put together a city team involving rear-vengering, planning, CLA's office, and environmental affairs to provide comment and review on the draft document. The document, comments are due to the county August 19th. We would be prepared to bring it back to the council before that date so that you could have time to have any additional comments on that. We will also coordinate with Culver City. We will look at the 12-point plan. We will look at what our own city requirements are as it relates to oil drilling to have a comprehensive set of comments and review and recommendations for the council.
And then also from planning?
We received this draft EIR about a month ago, and Faisal Roble, we already forwarded the draft to our in-house EIR consultants who are doing a separate environmental impact report for the West Adams Community Plan Program. We intend to follow suit with that draft and see what role our EIR consultant would play on this issue. And we will be working with the Environmental Affairs Department as the general manager just expressed.
So, let me just add for the public, the contact person will be Dee Allen, Environmental Affairs. And I have my card here so that you can go to one person and get the information. And we will provide the coordinating role with all the various parties as we come back with a comprehensive set of comments for you.
Indeed. Would you just, for the public, give your website, city website?
It's just changed. EnvironmentLA.org.
Okay, all right.
And my phone, my phone number is, my direct phone number is 213-978-0840.
Okay, thank you. And let me thank all of the public that came that represented the Baldwin Hills Conservancy, Culver Crest, the Culver City School District, also Ladera, and also Councilman O'Leary, who was gracious enough to let me speak at their council meeting earlier this week. We certainly are pleased that they're here and looking forward to working with them. Colleagues, we also have an amending motion. Many of the items that Ms. Allen mentioned earlier came about from the council meeting at Culver City to add on to our existing motion. So, we have 42. So we have 42A that we'd asked for an eye vote on 42 and 42A today. And also, we'd like to invite all of the community members that are here, we're going to have a press availability in the back room after this vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
Thank you, that item's been approved. We go back to those in order, next item.
Next item, Madam President, is item number 21, and that was call special for cards.
Yes, Mr. Zuma Dogg? Mr. Zuma Dogg on item number 21.
Okay, it's a very important item. You know that City Council passed for the November ballot, they're going to put a property tax for $30 million. They're going to try to raise $30 million with the property tax on the ballot for gang reduction and youth development, and we got a lot of that on the agenda today. Oh, this is workforce housing! Workforce housing, item 21. Could you restart the clock, please?
This is item, this is workforce investment board.
Yes, workforce, okay, workforce investment. Well, this is federal grant entitlement money, okay, and it requires that the city has to have an oversight committee, okay? And this is for an appointment of a commissioner, and again, we're dealing with federal grant money for job creations and job training, and I'm, I don't want to use any more time, but now I'm very concerned if this is a mayoral appointee, that the money will not be used what it's supposed to, and I'd like to say I'm concerned about patronage appointments here, people with no experience, just paybacks appointments here, and this is something very important, and watch the money, because I don't trust this mayor.
Very much. This item is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
Thank you. Next item is 28.
And that was call special for cards.
Yes, Mr. Zuma Dogg? Okay. Number 28 is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
Thank you. We're going to hold item 37 on the desk for a moment. Next item?
Next item's item 38, and that was call special for cards.
Mr. Zuma Dogg? On item 38.
Yes, I'll take a minute for this. It's about $9 million for CRA public improvements, and the problem is, the CRA, it's a corrupt organization that is robbing the city blind, sucking all the money that's supposed to be used for things good, and we never see it, and I'm very concerned when I see $9 million go into the CRA. Let me just look this up real quick, 38, I'm very sorry. Oh, boy, is the city getting a break on this one. So let us suffice to say here that over $9 million for public improvements, I hope the public gets to decide on these improvements, because that's the problem with the CRA. It's a lot of money, they decide, hey, we're going to do the Grand Avenue project. A few billionaires and a few council members and a few people say, we're going to do the Grand Avenue project, billions of dollars, and they decide that's where the public improvements money is going to go. I say the public improvement money from the CRA should be decided by the public and not rich developers, and it's robbing us blind, and the CRA is the number-one cause of problems in the city.
We now go to Miriam Fogler in the San Fernando Valley. And Mr. Zuma Dogg, if I could, please ask you not to scream into the microphone. Go back to San Fernando Valley, Ms. Fogler.
Yes, we have folks back here from China, and I wanted to give them a little education of what the CRA is, and what the agency for and why. Well, it was established in 1949, you know, after World War II, a lot of pieces, people in Europe had to use what you call eminent domain, and so 1949, we brought the concept over here, folks, thinking it was such a good thing, and to help developers bring, you know, bring a lot of, bring the economy up, because after the war, we had, we lost a lot of jobs. And so this agency was here to give jobs, and they started out here with the unions, and now they have unions working for the city. And, you know, this is kind of a concept from communism, I hate to say that, but that's what this agency's about, and it's very dangerous, and so is the parcel tax, because the parcel tag, the gang reduction thing, is going to be placed in CRA zones. I know it was going to happen, I know it's going to be another benefactor. So, folks, we cannot benefit from the CRA, because it's privately owned, even though it gets public money, it gets public money, so they have to have public hearings, and they take the tax increment money from the city. The police, our fire department, our paramedics, our essential services are being depleted its funds from the county, when they get annually, and it goes to CRA, and now they want to use a parcel tax to do the same thing, and they want to continue to deplete the city more and more money. And that's why this agency must be shut down, and we must bring back the city planning, and make it clean out, a lot of the bureaucrats in there, and bring, have people, developers, go for even equal bids, not having people giving favoritism and then sweetheart deals, and then on top of that, they're using the tax increment money, every time they put a high riser up, they use the money and they keep the tax money in this, and we do not reap the benefits, and the police and fire get more expensive, more money, and we have to increase our trash fees because of it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fogler. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, if you could please open the roll on item number 38, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
14 ayes.
That item's been approved. If we could go back to item, yes, Mr.?
I just want to request that items 29 and 30 go forth with.
29 and 30 will go forth with. If we could go back to item number 37, we do have one speaker card, Mr. Garcetti, if we can go with the one speaker card first. Denise Lopez, from Senator Sadio's office.
Hi, good morning, good morning, Madam President, council members. My name's Denise Lopez, with the Office of State Senator Gilbert Sadio, here to kindly ask for your support for the California Dream Act. A recent report by the Public Policy Institute of California notes that current graduation rates, the state, at the current graduation rates, the state is not capable of producing enough college graduates to meet future economic demands. This report also suggests that migration of college-educated workers from other states and countries will also not fill these needs. The authors of this report also advise that the state play an active role in enabling more Californians to obtain degrees, and they urge that actions to increase educational attainment. The previous version of this bill was vetoed by the governor last year. As this year's version of the bill continues to move forward in the legislature, we would like to request your continued support for Senate Bill 1301, the California Dream Act. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, and thank you so much to Senator Sadio for his leadership in putting this forward and continuing to fight this fight. You know, when we ask ourselves, what are the value of our, what's the value of our cities, what are the values of our state and of our nation? It's a reward hard work, it's the idea of an opportunity, that we're a nation of laws, but a nation of immigrants as well, and that the driver of opportunity has always been, if you're a young person studying hard, that doesn't matter where you came from, or what language your parents speak, what religion you practice, what race you are, you should be able to be provided a reward for the hard work that you put in. And every parent dreams of their child being able to go further than he or she has, being able to get a better job, a better education, and to fulfill what we call the American dream. Government shouldn't stand in the way of the American dream, but instead should be making that dream a reality. In 2001, AB 540 opened the door for legal residents and undocumented high school students, graduates, to attain higher education by allowing qualified students to pay in-state tuition, like every other California student. However, even with this aid, AB 540 students and their families cannot afford to pay the high tuition rates from colleges and universities. Access to higher education is not a privilege, it's a right, and SB 1301 gives the opportunity for undocumented students to attend college, earn a degree, and to contribute to society. The Dream Act would allow AB 540 students access to institutional financial aid in public colleges and universities, and it begins to scratch the surface by removing a serious hurdle to attaining a higher education. I was with Senator Obama on Sunday at the National Council of La Raza, where Senator McCain came the next day. Both of them spoke out in favor of national Dream Act assistance, which was very important. No matter who was elected president, we had a supporter of that. Senator Obama's gone even further, because when he was in the, excuse me, the Illinois state legislature, he actually helped enact similar legislation to this, and I know it is a core value for him as well. But it's in the best interests of our city, of our state's economy, to have an educated workforce, to not punish people who have worked hard, but to reward it. It's our loss when somebody doesn't get to go to university who has studied hard and contributed. What we're saying is, we're closing doors to you, and we want to push you to the periphery of society, we want you to earn less, contribute less, we want you to have less knowledge, we want to see our crime rates sometime go up, we want to see our poverty rates go up. But when we open doors, the opposite happens. We see safer communities, we see stronger communities, and we see the future of our state together. So I ask for your support today. I know we've had great, strong supporters, Mr. Cardenas, when he was in the legislature, and Mr. Alarcon as well. I know Mr. Weezer and Mr. Reyes feel very strongly about this, but all of us have these students in our midst, who are graduating from Los Angeles high schools, who are working hard, and who deserve that chance to go on and get that assistance that will improve the quality of life for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Reyes, followed by Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Council President. Councilman Garcetti captured our dilemma here in this great city, if not in this country, what's happening to our youth. I've had occasion where I've come across a young person, a student body president, a honor roll, who gets accepted to these different universities, and just has that lost look, sense of despair, and asking, I've done everything right, I'm top of my class, class, school, student body president, and what can I do now? I've had firefighters who have brought in youngsters from the neighborhoods into the fire stations, and they've followed all the rules, they've followed all of the different demands, been on time, model student workers, and they ask, Councilman, how can we help this young individual? He has all of these qualifications, all these accomplishments, and yet, there's nowhere for him to go. There's thousands of students like this. It's about time we appreciate and give value to their efforts. I'm hoping this is a unanimous vote, and we need to send a message that we need to do what we can to support Senator Sadio. I thank him, because I believe he's taken on a heroic topic, effort, and it's a subject matter that many won't touch, because it's too politically sensitive. But we are talking about human beings, we're talking about the future of this country, and I'm hoping that we can give a different message that America is about nurturing our youth regardless of their status, and the fact that they can become contributors to this great country. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Weezer, followed by Mr. Alarcon.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And ladies and gentlemen, this item here is a continuation of AB 540, a proposal that was put forward by my, our good friend Marco Firebaugh, rest in peace, who allowed us to provide in-state tuition to children who are undocumented, and allowed them to move forward to higher education, so that they make it easier for them to graduate from college. You know, many studies have shown that for Latinos and other students of color, one of the main reasons they drop out of college, it's not so much the academics, but the ability to pay for their education. Many of them come from low-income families, and they have to get jobs and study at the same time, or some of them say, hey, I'm just going to go work for a while, make some money, and then come back to college, but sometimes that doesn't fulfill. So this will allow us to provide a support system to promising students to finish their college education and contribute back to society. And you know what? Some of these students who will graduate will probably be some of the most patriotic students and citizens in this country, because they have realized the opportunities this country has given them. And these are people who were given this opportunity because they were brought to this country through no fault of their own. They didn't make the decision to come to this country undocumented or not, it was made for them. They are now here in this country, and if they play by the rules, get the best grades and do well and get into college, we should reward them for that. But you know what? They're not the only ones that will benefit from this. We all will benefit from this. Why waste talent? If we provide these students an ability to go on and finish their university experience, these are talented students that will give back to this country, and it's better for us to match their skills with what they can do, rather than tell, not allow them to finish university and have them do other jobs when they are more talented to do other things as well. This is, in my mind, a no-brainer. We've got to support these young people, ensure that they not only benefit themselves, but the rest of this country. There is a national fight to do this as well at the national level, and the state of California has always been in the forefront of showing what it means to be a great country, and hopefully through this, we will move forward. We know that the governor has vetoed similar legislation in the past, but with the support from this city and many other people, we hopefully will pass it this time, and allow thousands and thousands of young people to reach their full God-given potential and give back to this great country that I know they're proud to be in. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Alarcon.
Members, I think Councilmember Garcetti and Councilmember Weezer, Councilmember Reyes have captured the essence of this. This is an investment in the future. This is an investment that recognizes that millions of people who are here, particularly children, who by no choice of their own have lived, been educated, and been qualified to receive awards based on their academic achievement, and yet are prohibited from doing so because of technical rules, are deserving of this kind of recognition by our society. They're not going back to Mexico, they're not going back to the other countries. They are going to stay here, and the question is whether they will be as productive as they can be, whether they will be able to compete, and whether they will be provided with the tools necessary to return the investment that we give them by helping them achieve an education. Ben Franklin said something about penny wise and pound foolish. It is penny wise and pound foolish to save a few bucks by not providing an education to these kids, when in fact, in the future, they will produce much more in the way of benefits to our society, and as Mr. Weezer said, will be very appreciative for the investment by our country. And so I was very proud to serve with Marco Firebaugh and Mr. Sadio, and to support their cry for justice for these people who have spent so much time in our city, in our communities, in our state, contributing to our community in a positive way. I mean, what more could we ask of our young people than for them to continue with their education? But we have to help them, as we help so many other young people who are deserving. So I'm very pleased to support this resolution. Commend our friend Senator Sadio. He has just been a tenacious advocate for those who have no other spokesperson and don't even have the right to vote, and yet can make a difference in our community. So we want to say thank you to him for his leadership of those who have no spokesperson. These kids will be productive contributors to our society, and if we invest in them, I know that we will get so much more in return. They're not going back, they're going to stay here and be part of our society. Let's get them prepared for the future.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. Members, I rise to support this very important action of our state, and I want to thank Gil Sadio, who I'm very proud of, who has always been a fighter for all people. The opportunity for young people to gain an education in California, this bill, everyone would be qualified, who gets qualified. If they're qualified, whoever they are, from Eureka to San Diego, they would be eligible to get these grants. They're qualified, they're not taking other qualified people out of the mix, it's whoever is qualified. And it is opportunity that brings the greatest amount of good for all the people. So as we evolve as a state, and as we evolve as a country, hopefully we can look to always widen our arms as far as possible to reach as many people to help them be successful and enjoy what I did as a Californian, had a great education in the schools of California. Thank you, and thanks Senator Sadio for me, who's a very great man.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Mr. Zeidman.
Thank you. The state permits students, Mr. Reyes, don't look so surprised. You'll be pleased. The state permits students, you look perplexed. No, I heard your comments, and I'm very appreciative of them, but the state permits the student rate, or the state rate for individuals, they've already approved that, I think it was Assembly Bill 540, that was done in 2001. So not find- So, not financial aid, but they do permit that. When we look at the 25,000, which is the number that we have in this report, showing they're graduating, and they're obviously achieving success by graduating, why should we prevent them from pursuing that if we are really a city and a country of immigrants? And we look at the United States with a welcome mat, and we talk about the diversity, we talk about the impact. So when I look at the governor's statement, the governor says he does not believe that undocumented children should be penalized for their acts of their parents, it's going to penalize others. But you've got to have a GPA, you've got to have the required criteria, you're not jumping ahead of the line, you have to meet the mandate that's already established for everyone else. So why should we penalize them? And I know the governor has vetoed this on two occasions, and I would hope that he would see, as Mr. Alarcon said, these people are here, productive members of society. Why do we prevent them and limit them for pursuing their dream? And their dream, whatever profession they want to get into with that education. So I'm going to join in supporting this for the simple logic that if we are already going to give them the state rate, why not continue and let them pursue and graduate and become a member of society? And I've said many, many times, incarcerate or educate. Well, following that trend, obviously, education is the challenge that we have to follow through. So, Mr. Reyes, I see the smile on your face. You looked perplexed when I stood up, so I'm very pleased to see your smile. Thank you very much. So I'll be supporting this.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Just another quick comment, it's another no-brainer, obviously. All boats rise together, it's the most effective, all human beings are connected, we are a city of immigrants, legal and illegal, we are people first, and the more you give kids building blocks that give them opportunities, it's part of Janus Hans prevention intervention, it's the whole concept of the front end, helping people so that they don't end up, as our buddy here, you know, Mr. Zine said, incarcerate. Educate, obviously, not incarcerate. And we have a stronger individual, we have a stronger community, we have a stronger America, so it's in the best interest of all of us that we have a strong, young group coming up after people like me, who know what they're doing and can take the reins of power and economics. You've got to give a kid a break, give them education, give them all the support you can give a young person so that they can make it in the world going forward. Yes, unanimous vote.
Thank you. Ms. Gruehl.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Zine, for making Mr. Reyes's day today on that. But I think, you know, a lot has been said, but the important part is, these are young people who have worked very hard to be part of the American dream and why it's called the American Dream Act, and the fact that they have worked hard to get good grades to go to school and will be productive residents of our state. And the whole idea is to help people get that step up to the next place. And these kids are not just getting a handout, they're young people who have worked very hard to achieve educational opportunity, to achieve educational heights, and this will allow all of us, really, to benefit. It's not just these students, but it's the whole city of Los Angeles and the state of California. And so I join in support with my colleagues today to have this item move forward and hope that the governor will sign it to help those young people, because they are our future. And if we continue to push them down and not help them, we're going to see the same kind of issues we face every single day. And this is an investment in our future, an investment in the state of California. Thank you very much, Mr. Zine.
Mr. Cardenas, followed by Mr. Weezer.
Thank you. I just want to also point out something as well. Some people get real rhetorical on this issue and start to accuse these kids of getting favoritism in the admissions process, or try to say that these kids get favoritism when it comes to how much they're charged to go to school in California. The fact of the matter is, they're not getting preferential treatment, they actually have to show that they were residences and going to high school here in California. So this SB 1301 has nothing to do with somebody who comes here to this country and decides, you know, six months later, even a year or two later, that they want to stay here and go to school and get residency status. This does not apply to them, this has nothing to do with them. This has to do with young people who are living in this country, are going to school, and have actually proven that they can be accepted to our universities that followed all the rules and have passed all the tests and got their SAT scores high enough to get into these schools. Some of these young people, for example, have been able to surpass the almost insurmountable ability to get into UCLA. UCLA today, in some of the disciplines, you have to have like a 4.2 GPA, and you have to have a very, very high SAT score just to be admitted. These are the kinds of students that we're talking about, this is the just thing, and when you read SB 1301 and you look at it for what it is, and then if you take the time to read the Constitution of the United States of America, and you look at those two side by side, you realize that SB 1301 is, in fact, well within the spirit and the purpose of why this country has the Constitution and what it means. So I just wanted to point that out, that these young people will have passed all of the requirements, they will have been living in California for years and years and years before this would apply to them so that they can have the opportunity to live their dreams of going to college and becoming a professional, and they're already members of our community, and they should be treated as equal members. Thank you.
Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much, and I know I spoke once before, but I wanted to make a very important point, and that is, in the immigration debate, it is often argued that some of these immigrants take away from American citizens. In this case, what we're doing is allowing undocumented students to qualify for some financial aid that is available to everyone. And each year, financial aid, we argue and urge more students to apply for it, because each year, there's a lot of Cal grants that go unspent, and each year, we actually have a very aggressive campaign to make sure that students are applying for these grants and these financial aid, because a lot of it goes unspent. So this is not really taking away from anybody, but is allowing them to access some money that is already available and goes unspent each year in most cases, and most often for these financial aid that they will qualify for. And I think that was a very important point to make as well. Thank you.
That's it for the comments. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Very good. Fourth with on that. Next item, please.
Next item is item number 39, and that was called Special For Cards.
And that speaker is Zuma Dogg, followed by Matt Dowd, and Marion Volger in the Valley.
Yes, this one is called special event fees, but there's nothing very special about what's happening. And wow, for once I get to talk about it in front of Councilmember Jack Weiss, it's like, you know, a rare sighting of some rare exotic bird. Councilmember Weiss is here, and I'd like to say, what he said back in 2000 is, with these special event fees, when you waive the fees, you're essentially making a contribution to the charity. And I think that we need audits into all the charities. Here's the problem in the city of Los Angeles, and I'd like to thank the Los Angeles Times for picking up on my complaints of nonprofit abuse, they did a front-page story. The communities fall into further disrepair, because what happens is their state, federal, and local money provided to nonprofit organizations to provide services in the community. So, for example, now you waste all the money, then you say, "Oh, we need to put a parcel tax to help solve the problems. Now we need to put all these measures on the ballot, we need to raise $30 million to end gang violence." Well, if $30 million would have solved the problem, they would have done it already, and I think it's irresponsible for councilmembers to say, "If you vote for this $30 million, oh, we need to vote for this $30 million gang parcel tax to once and for all end gang violence." Tony Cardenas said that. Well, you better tell the gangs that you're going to put on the ballot to once and for all end gang violence, because I don't think they know that they're ending it yet, and again...
This is special events, Mr. Dogg, this is special events.
Oh, special...
You're off on a tangent.
Well, it's nonprofits, and I like to say that the gang intervention units are nonprofits. That's what they do, they take this money and put it into nonprofits, just like the ones I say have no accountability. And then the problem is, you think you're doing something to help the problem, but you're just wasting all this money in these nonprofits, and then the community doesn't get the money, and it falls into further disrepair. I say clean up the nonprofit system of these special event fees.
Thank you. Mr. Dowd. Matt Dowd's not here, Marion Volger in the Valley, please.
Oh, Matt Dowd's not there? Well, he said it all, and unfortunately, that's the reason why you got these special events, to show how good you're doing, and actually it's not, because you've got all these nonprofits, like he talked about, that are using this money, and I wish Sharon Brew would be here, because she shouldn't be throwing in the towel. She shouldn't, I hope she's not being scared away by you or anything, but I hope she comes back, because she tallied up all these things, and these things add up, you know, to our budget here for the city. For example, we have one here for $10,000 for the Seventh Year Augusta Event, August 3rd, 1st. Why can't we have money from the corporations to sponsor these things? You know, the problem is, you take the police and fire department away from the resident city, and then, you know, that's the reason why it costs so much money. $8,000 for this American and Caribbean capacity organization festival, I mean, this goes on and on, '40 and '41 are the same thing, you're putting in monies that should be raised by these organizations instead of taking it from the city, and that's why the parcel tax is a bad one, because folks, you know, they're not going to use the money the way it's supposed to, they're just going to earmark it for keep going on and on, and then next year, two years, they'll put it back on the ballot to increase it again. It's just an opener for more of these special events and gang reduction special events, that's why I call them, that's what they're adding now to the, but they just added the delay, '31, '36, '36, those are gang reduction programs that you're going to have to pick up, folks. And, you know, this should not be us paying for it, the parents should be taking care of their kids.
She appears to be off-topic, this is a special event motion matter?
Well, the special event matter does relate to our kids, because a lot of these programs do indirectly help the kids. It's the way you're raising the money is wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Armando Herman.
When it comes to special events, what is the moral of special events? Does it have a tribute to what it's meant for? Are we actually auditing and scrutinizing the way this money is being placed or pushed around? In our current inflation of high taxes, should the taxpayers again pick up these weighty costs that the city of Los Angeles feels are appropriate? No, we shouldn't. We should ask the mayor and all the councilmembers to really reflect on these special events and make those who are interested in these special events pay for them at their cost, not on the backs of the taxpayers, not on the backs of the working-class people. Because I already know and I can see that LA is sinking deeper and deeper into this recession, that some claim doesn't exist. And so will these nonprofits scam and scheme us with your help? Today's topics, you know, seem to go off track, but the cry of the people, Mr. Zuma Dogg, he has right and good questions, although they might seem to be at your hearing. But I well know that some of you have been involved in some scandals with our taxpaying dollars, the abuse of our special event money where it is not accounted for. And while the city attorney sits there and laughs, I just simply can say, pay attention and do more for the taxpayer people. Thank you.
That'll close our public comment on this. Mr. Alarcon, did you want to speak on this item?
Yes, I just want to stand up for special events in the city of Los Angeles. Not to sound too much like Tom Labonge, I think that while we devote time after time for public comment and people continue to criticize special events, somebody needs to stand up and say, "I don't know a city in the country that doesn't spend money on special events." Whether you're talking about a harvest festival in some location or celebrating many of the things you see on TV across the country, on the news, those are special events that are funded in some portion by the local jurisdiction. It is a responsibility, it's a sort of amenity that comes with a city jurisdiction's responsibility. We can't put a park in every community, but we can engender the feeling of community spirit and bringing people together through the use of special events, and that's why they're good. Now, yes, we do have a responsibility to scrutinize those special events, to ensure that they meet standards, to ensure that we are, in fact, not contributing to unworthy causes. But to generally attack nonprofit organizations as the root of this so-called evil is really inappropriate. Nonprofits are great contributors to our society, without them, I don't know how we would begin to solve many, many problems in our city. And not all the events are necessarily sponsored by nonprofit organizations. The one that we're looking at is, somebody talked about corporate support. It's Pepsi. Pepsi is supporting this in unison with the city, and I think, of course, it's appropriate to gather support from the corporate sector, but sometimes you just can't, but communities deserve them, particularly disenfranchised communities. So I thought, after hearing time after time, that I just wanted to weigh in and say, special events aren't evil in and of themselves. If we need to scrutinize them, let's do that, I appreciate that. But let's not criticize each and every event. It is an important, essential element of building a community for us to be able to have these special events, and I welcome organizations to come to the Seventh Council District and encourage special events so that we can bring our communities together.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alarcon. Any other members wish to be heard? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Item number 43, called Special For Cards, and there is a substitute motion that has been distributed.
Okay, item 43. Arnold Sachs, if you'd like to come forward on 43.
Excuse me, Mr. President, could I hear the substitute motion before I speak on the item?
Those are always posted as part of any of our work, those are posted as part of the conduct of the council.
Okay. Item 43, I take it, is investigating the county board of supervisors. It's great, the city stepping up to investigate the county board of supervisors, only this horse left the barn more than seven months ago when they closed the hospital, more than two years ago when they first, even longer than two years ago when they got the D-minuses from the federal government regarding patient care. The only reason that the hospital closed is because they lost the $300 million, because the county board of supervisors failed to act on any other problems that kept coming up, and they just kept passing, passing, passing. So for the city council to finally step up, it's almost like this horse is so far out, it's outside the state. That's how far away from they are behind on this issue. And to step up regarding the personnel at MLK, do they have anything to say about them losing the personnel files at MLK? Do they have anything to say about the enactment of the Metro Plan that was never enacted? Although the previous, the CMO for the county, the chief medical officer, kept saying, "We have this Metro Plan and we're going to review all the personnel." And anybody step up then and say, "Wait a minute, nothing's ever been done. Now you're going to step up and step out? Thanks for nothing. Thank you for your time, your attention, and your patience."
That is our only speaker on this item. Anybody wishing to be heard on this? Mr. Parks?
I'd like to just comment on a couple of things. This council has taken a position on a variety of issues over the last several years, it deals with MLK, whether we were part of trying to keep the emergency in the trauma room open through our presence at board of supervisors meetings, meetings out at the hospital itself. Most recently, this council went on record to support a position that asked the governor to meet with the board of supervisors and begin to look at whether the UC system could play a role. Very recently, the UC system met with the county, the county's proposed a plan, now is being reviewed by the UC system. In the midst of this, in our efforts, because in certain parts of our city, the 8th, the 9th, the 10th... the ninth, the tenth, the fifteenth primarily are impacted by the closure of this emergency room and trauma center, that we get many questions by the community as to what we're doing to help facilitate the reopening. I think today, or the information of the last week, is somewhat disheartening that we were, as all the community was advised, that the employees that were at that hospital would get extra scrutiny to find out that twenty-two fell through the system, the computer system crashed, and then most recently in the paper to say that of the sixteen hundred employees that were being fingerprinted, a number of them refused to participate, and then they found later that several of them had criminal records that would have prohibited them from working, are the kinds of things that do not bring forth a credibility issue as we go out into the community. So I think it's important, as we've been moving on this issue, because it impacts certainly the residents we represent, not necessarily that we have control of the hospital, but certainly our ability to be able to talk to our residents, let them know that we are taking an active role. Each time there is a hearing, myself, Ms. Perry, or Janice Hahn, or Herb Weston, finding a way to get involved, to talk about these needs. Many of people are not aware that the fifty thousand patients that no longer go to MLK's emergency room are now overcrowding every hospital in the county. Right now, there's still a couple hundred thousand people getting urgent care at the hospital, but that's all outpatient care. And certainly, for a area of the city that fifty percent of its residents do not have medical insurance, this hospital is absolutely essential. It grew out of the flames of the sixty-five riot, and whatever we can do as far as our efforts to get the emergency and trauma rooms reopened, to provide in-house or inpatient care, and with employees that we have a certain level of credibility, we should go forward on that. We have a substitute motion to add the information about the most recent discovery that addresses the sixteen hundred employees and the fingerprints to be added to our original motion that dealt with the missing twenty-two employees. So I'd ask for an aye vote as we move forward on substitute forty-three.
Thank you. Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also wanted to rise in support of substitute forty-three, Mr. Parks' motion. I believe that people deserve quality service, quality employees, and by this most recent action, I think we can say to the community that things are progressing in a positive manner in that those who are not there to serve the public in the most effective and comprehensive way will not be able to stay, and goes a long way to the restoration of health services for the communities that we represent. So I just wanted to offer my public support to Mr. Parks as well. Thank you.
Mr. Weston.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. I want to rise to commend our colleague Bernard Parks for all of the work that he's done where it relates to the King Drew Medical Center and his attempt to try to solve things. I do, however, Mr. Parks, take issue with one thing that you said. You referenced the eighth district, the ninth district, the district I represent, and Janice Hahn's district. It's bigger than that because it, with the closures of these facilities, with the troubles, it is affecting the entire hospital network and trauma network and emergency network throughout the county of Los Angeles. And people who live on the west side or in the valley, if you're in an automobile accident on the 110 freeway, you want to get to the closest facility. And if that seconds count, seconds and minutes count, and I say that from experience because I think I mentioned once before on this council floor that several years ago, two of my sons were in a very serious automobile accident. Now, I have insurance. I didn't need to go to King Drew Medical Center, but given where the accident took place, the King Drew Medical Center was the closest facility that they could get to. My son, Herb III, almost died, was in intensive care for eight days, but he pulled out of it. I don't know what would have happened had we had to drive another several minutes to get him to another facility. So, Mr. Parks, I think what you're proving here is that the city council of Los Angeles has influence where it relates to the board of supervisors. We have influence where it relates to the state legislature, and you taking the lead on suggesting that the governor engage with the UC medical system to try to get them to take over this facility, I think was a feather in your cap, and you should be commended for it. The key here is that we have a already fragile trauma network, and it's our responsibility to take care of not just individuals who can't take care of themselves. It's for the rich guy driving down the 110 freeway and gets, has a heart attack, and the closest medical facility would be King. It's for the housewife that's going to pick up the kids from soccer practice. It is for everyone. So I commend you for all of the work that you've done on the council where it relates to this, and urge you to continue to lead the fight on the city council to bring proper health care to all of the residents of the City of Los Angeles.
Mr. Rosendahl.
I just, again, need to stand up when I say rich guy, white guy, this and that. I must tell you this, Mr. Parks, you're showing real leadership on a real issue that's important to all of us. We are having a health meltdown in America today. It's a disaster. It's a total disaster. Quality health care for everybody is in jeopardy. And Mr. Weston's right, you get in that automobile, you don't care where the hospital is, you just want to go there and get taken care of. So we're all impacted by the crisis and the meltdown of our health care in the city, county, state, and nation. That's why one thing I hope happens is a new president will focus on health care for all of us people. But your leadership on this issue was critical to all of us. My Mar Vista people, my Westchester people, we're just as much sensitively concerned about what happens at that hospital as we are any other hospital because we're all over the place as people. So thank you for your leadership and look forward to more leadership from you on that issue in the months and years ahead. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. I really appreciate our colleague, Councilmember Parks, continuing to bring to light the issues at King Harbor Hospital. It's still so frustrating to, for me particularly, to represent a community whose only, you know, access to health care is this hospital. And now it's really not even a hospital, it's more of a clinic. And so to find out even now, in a greatly downsized facility, that we're still having come to light problems with employees who are there, but it really, it's a failure of oversight. It's a failure of somebody paying attention to what's going on at this facility, rooting out the problem employees. But more importantly, you know, we have all been hoping that we were on a path to opening this as a full-service health care facility. And I know my constituents and myself, we're not going to be happy until this is a full-service health care facility, not a clinic, not something that doesn't have a trauma center or full services. So it's frustrating to think that even in this, again, downsized facility, we haven't been able to figure out what the problems are, root out the problems, but more importantly, get us on a path to reopen this hospital. It seems like every time you think it's not going to get worse, there's a new set of problems, and I don't know how we can make it any more clear that, you know, we are concerned about the availability of quality health care for the residents of South Los Angeles. And, you know, it does impact everybody. It's not just a South Los Angeles issue. This is just a symptom of hospitals closing all over, particularly in the county of Los Angeles. We went from twenty-two trauma centers to about ten or eleven trauma centers. That is, that's the safety net for all of us. And I just read a report in some of my data reports of someone who had a gunshot wound and drove them, had someone drive them, thinking that that hospital was still open, was still available, only to be turned away and have to figure out how to get to another hospital. I mean, these are life-threatening injuries, and we know that until this hospital reopens as a full-service health care, the people in South Los Angeles are being discriminated against when it comes to health care. It's not a privilege, it's a right of everyone, and I don't know how we can be any more strong in our message, Councilmember Parks, to the county, that this is critical, it's important. Let's get to the root of all these problems, let's clean it up, and let's get ourselves on the way to opening this facility as the great hospital that it once was. It really was a great hospital. It was a teaching hospital, it was modeled, it was, people would come and train there because it was such a good hospital. So I appreciate you bringing this in. Maybe when you're there at the county, we can guarantee that we're going to have someone who's really going to turn this hospital around.
That is our last speaker. We can please prepare the roll on this item and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item forty-four, called Special by Councilmember Grul, and I believe there are cards on this as well.
Zuma Dog on item forty-four. If one on the net, sir.
Yes, this is something about the Freeway Act of 2008. First of all, I'd like to say a part of the greening of L.A. would be to print on both sides of the agendas. Okay, you got these agendas, you could save half the waste of paper if you would simply print on both sides. But this is item forty-four, Freeway Act. Now, what it is, is it opposes, there's a federal law that outlaws tolling on the HOV lane. So again, the federal government wants to outlaw tolling on the HOV lane. City council opposes that. They want to be able to tow, and I'm very curious what Councilmembers Alarcon, Reyes, Rosendahl, and the other lefty socialist wackos, wonder what they're going to say about this. All right, all right, all right. I'd like to see, I'd like to see what these people have to say when we have a two-class system where we are charging people to drive down one lane while all the low-income people are forced to be stuck in traffic in the other. And so again, federal law wants to prohibit charging on HOV. Council wants to do it.
And that will close our public comment. Ms. Grul.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Colleagues, this is about local control. We've had this debate on many occasions, but it's most importantly about local control for the state of California and for local government. The bill that Congressman Miller has put forward seeks to make a federal prescription for solving traffic problems here on our local streets. I believe that we need to have every option available to us as decision-makers, and not to have people who do not represent our area making decisions that will impact our daily lives and provide options to us to deal with the really major traffic crisis we have in Los Angeles. Traffic is too costly for this region, and our air quality is too poor to outlaw any tools in our congestion relief toolbox. We are consistently ranked among the locations with the worst air quality in the United States. We are losing upwards of twelve billion dollars, excuse me, twelve million dollars a year to traffic congestion in our region, and the merits of congestion price have proven throughout the world, even in our backyard on the ninety-one expressway. And although it remains controversial, it is not means, that does not mean, that it should be outlawed. We are all too familiar with items that once were outlawed for being controversial but ultimately stymying the process in us here locally. So the city has already approved a pilot project to partner with the federal government. We have that, actually, an amendment to that discussion this Friday that would be looking to enhance the throughput on the 110, the 210, and the 10. This would only, not only reduce congestion, but it would also fund much-needed capital investment in our transit system. The bottom line is, we have had numerous examples where the federal government, the state government, have taken away our ability to deal with issues of traffic and land use, and we think it's important to have opposition to this resolution. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. We can prepare the roll, and please tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item forty-five, called Special by Councilmember Parks.
All right, Mr. Parks, item forty-five.
Thank you, Mr. President. This motion today, or this committee report, is something that I think caught us all by surprise in that many of us had been aware of the foreclosure rate, and the community had gone up a couple hundred percent. Most of us had pretty well concentrated on families that were losing their home or finding ways in which we could assist them. Recently, it came to our attention, and certainly was pleased that Mr. Garcetti came out to the eighth district along with the city attorney. We found that another victim of the foreclosure crisis are tenants in rent stabilization facilities because we're finding, at least in a couple of cases, as the owner of these foreclosed multifamily residences are moving on, they often leave the utilities unpaid. We then found in one instance where an intermediary for Countrywide came out, sent a letter to the tenants, demanded that they leave for a thousand dollars, well below the city ordinance. Some later said maybe they were confused about our rules, except they have done business in the city for a number of years. We're very fortunate that in a short time, that the city attorney letter to them caused them to withdraw or rescind that request. But it's something that, which I think all of us will begin to be confronted with. We have another issue in the eighth district where an individual walked away from a building, left five tenants there, and then once the water bill was not paid, the water and power cut the bill, or cut the water service off, later only to find that Building and Safety came in and found it uninhabitable. We've had others in which, again, the owners of these multifamily dwellings have put tenants in jeopardy. And so this motion basically asks the Housing Department along with the city attorney to move forward and investigate these eviction practices by these lenders. We're also asking that a newly, recently passed legislation, SB 1137, be fully enacted in the City of L.A. to protect those tenants who are the secondary victims of the foreclosure market, which in the first wave of foreclosures, they were never mentioned. And so I'd ask that we move forward on this to give this direction to the Housing Department, the city attorney, so that we can look at ways in which if our tenants are being victimized above and beyond what we know today, we can correct that if we have to take legal action. We're asking the city attorney to move forward. So I'd ask for an aye vote on forty-five.
Thank you very much. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And we said it in committee, but since we're in a larger setting here, it bears repeating that I want to thank the city attorney's office, the Housing Department, Mr. Parks' office. We joined together, the city attorney and the general manager of the Housing Department, Mr. Parks and myself, to deal with one case in one district. But I want to make sure all my colleagues hear loud and clear about what is going on throughout the city and what they need to keep their eyes out for. Two tenants of a building which was in foreclosure, they've always paid their rent on time, they've played by the rules, they've always been folks who have abided by every requirement under our rent stabilization ordinance, were improperly notified of a cash-for-keys offer of a thousand dollars and essentially told they had to get out, which was against the law. Any building prior to 1978, even if it goes in foreclosure and you're a tenant, you get to stay. Now, there are other reasons whether a building's in foreclosure or not, the tenants can be moved out in what's called a good-faith eviction, if somebody owns that building, is coming into it, if you've not paid the rent, et cetera. But I don't think Countrywide is, who owns this building that we were at, is coming to move in, the CEO. So it certainly wasn't not only a good-faith eviction, it was an improper and illegal eviction. Luckily, we have been able to keep those folks in there and to turn that back, and Countrywide has told us that it won't happen again. But we have to be vigilant because this was one person who knew who to call and contact the city attorney's office. Mr. Parks mentioned the other case, which is another foreclosure in my district in which the power was out for a couple of weeks. We worked with the Department of Water and Power, and that's moving forward now to make sure. But these are innocent victims who are renters caught up in the foreclosure crisis. It doesn't just affect our homeowners, and there is no more critical thing that we can be doing in a city which is majority renters than getting that word out there. Mr. Reyes asked for a report on the properties in his district, but perhaps we can just get a list, if a map is too difficult, a list of them. We know our districts very intimately. If we can get those properties, the Housing Department is working very closely with any of the folks that are owning them and also who are the agents of these new mortgage owners to be able to be sure that they know that they cannot illegally evict people simply because a property is in foreclosure. And I really ask each one of you to go through those lists, look in your own district, contact people in those buildings, and make sure, because I am sure that people got letters, thought they didn't have rights, got a thousand bucks, which doesn't even get them a month's rent outside of their rent-stabilized apartments, and now are dealing with that crisis. So it is really up to us to be that front line, and the Housing Department's doing a great job as we pursue on the city attorney's side whether there should be any civil or criminal actions taken. And that message should go loud and clear out to those folks who And that message should go loud and clear out to those folks who are taking over buildings that are foreclosed, that we will use the letter of the law, we will be vigilant about it and we will go after anybody who is illegally evicting folks. So thank you, Mr. Parks. Thank you, Mr. Alarcon, who's been really great on this too and of course, our wonderful Chair of Housing, Community Economic Development Committee, Mr. Wesson. But just wanted to stand up to make sure all of us know about that and are doing the work in our district offices to hold the line. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti, and I will now speak.
Ms. Grul?
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti, and thank you very much, Mr. Parks and Mr. Garcetti for leading this effort and Mr. Wesson. When I, I think it was a Friday afternoon or Thursday afternoon and you and Mr. Parks were talking about this, it happened in the city of Los Angeles. I was shocked that a company would do that, that it would come in and, because they created a lot of their own problems, to then go to some tenants who sometimes are living just from month to month and to just throw them out without all of the things. We have worked very hard in this city and debated extensively about ensuring that tenants have the rights and through the Ellis Act and really educating the public that we as a city take a tough stand to say, "We're going to protect those tenants" and that a company like Countrywide that would go and do that and I'm certain, and you will find this as you go forward in whatever decision you make to go after them for this, they're very well aware of the city's rules and the state's rules and very well aware of things that they can and cannot do. And as someone who at a time has held a Countrywide mortgage, they call every single day and every single week with information and new deals that they're going to offer people. What they don't tell you is they're not offering a very good deal to some of the tenants in the city of Los Angeles. And so this message that we're sending is, I think, a good one and to work with and just want to thank my colleagues for their leadership because they heard about it in their districts and there's so many people that may not have heard about this. And so the outreach efforts that you all are going to do and to help us, I think is going to be great and to be able to have that list of some of those areas, because I think unfortunately, this is the tip of the iceberg. As you go forward, I hope that you will let us know where we can be helpful in this process, not only from the city's perspective, but educating people and what kind of tools we have in our toolbox to do that. But when you pick up the paper every single day and see people suffering, that is avoidable and that people should be able to given their rights. We fought very hard for that and advocates have as well. So, I just want to stand up in support of this and thank you very much to Mr. Parks for his leadership on this issue. Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl is next.
Yeah, and I appreciated you, Mr. Garcetti, saying every district can be impacted by this and by shedding light on it in this public forum with Channel thirty-five, we've done a good thing. And I saw Mr. Parks on TV last week fighting for those tenants, which is exactly what we need to do, is fight for our tenants and appreciate your leadership on that very much. Let me ask you a question. This foreclosure business, and they're going to throw people out, would they fall into the opportunity to get a buyout package of seven grand or seventeen grand if they're sixty-two or older or disabled? What other rights and benefits can these people get?
Well, I think Judith Reel, Deputy City Attorney, I think the most important right is that if you're in a rent stabilized unit, you're entitled to continue to live there. The fact that a building has been foreclosed and so there is now a successor owner is not a grounds for eviction. So you really shouldn't even be getting to the issue of what relocation they're owed. They don't have to move.
And that's real good to hear. Now, what about those who've been given this quick thousand and the keys and stuff like that? Can we get them back and can we take criminal action against people who do that?
It's certainly something that, you know, if those complaints, if they come to the attention of the Housing Department or the city attorney's office, then certainly we can investigate and see what kind of practices have gone on. They'd also have some civil rights and civil remedies and we could assist them in making sure they got ahold of someone who could represent them capably.
Now, if somebody's watching this and there are a lot of people who watch this, is there a phone number, a hotline number, something they can call if they're being threatened by some punk who bought the building?
Yes, there is. Let me give you the hotline number if I can here.
While we're getting that, we can also always call three-one-one and we know those operators will be able to connect through to the Housing Department. We've made sure, we trained on that, but give us the exact number as well. That's the hotline that we've set up too, please.
My name is Roberto Aldapi, I'm the Assistant General Manager for the Housing Department. The hotline numbers are very simple numbers, area code two-one-three eight-zero-eight-eight-eight-eight-eight. And if the folks are listening to this and they're facing foreclosures and evictions, we will assign an investigator. We have an investigation enforcement unit that will assign a housing investigator and will try to seek compliance from the owner and the owner does not comply, then we will package occasion refer that to our city attorney's office for enforcement.
Give that to us one more time.
Two-one-three eight-zero-eight-eight-eight-eight-eight.
Great, and I appreciate that very much and I'd like to see the list for the eleventh district of any structures that fit within that category so we can inform our field deputies and most importantly, our neighborhood councils and our constituents of their rights in a situation like this. Thank you so much again, Mr. Parks, for your leadership on this.
Thank you. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just would like to ask Housing, one of the issues that came up in the Eighth District was a landlord walked away from the building, utilities were cut off, then later we ended up with a situation where we basically deemed the house uninhabitable. What is the process? I understand we had something in place at one time to reward and power and housing communicated before we cut off the utilities of a multifamily structure so that we wouldn't put people in that situation.
Right. You know, the timing of this motion couldn't have been any better. The Housing Department has been working.
Speaking Mike?
The timing couldn't have been any better. The Housing Department had, within the last couple of months, have been working on the issue of foreclosure and we've identified two issues among other challenges that foreclosure crisis raises within the city of Los Angeles. Foreclosures as it relates to evictions and foreclosures as it relates to utility shut-offs. And we've embarked on a strategy to deal with both the issues. And in reference to your question, we've, the strategy on utility shut-offs, it was we recently met, it was the day before yesterday with the Department of Water and Power, over the issues of utility shut-offs and avoiding termination to begin with. The Department of Water and Power have tentatively agreed to give us a list of the shut-offs prior to the utility being shut off. What the Department of Water and Power will then do is refer a case over to our utility maintenance program. The city enacted that in ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-eight, in reaction to a crisis that exists where there was eleven thousand multi-meter residential families, units that were without utilities. So, once the referral is made from the Department of Water and Power, we work with our outreach contractors, our rent ESCO account program contractors, to go out and talk to the tenants and to encourage them to participate into this program whereby they pay their rent into this program and we set up an ESCO account and whereby then, after that, we will then pay the Department of Water and Power the delinquent bill.
Now, what's the name of the program again?
Utility Maintenance Program.
Now, is that something if somebody went on your website, they could find that specifically or is that something they have to search around?
All this information can be found on our website.
Okay. But the utility maintenance program, we now reestablished that relationship with water and power because when the case in the Eighth District that we had is, we ended up with a water and power bill of twenty-five thousand, but by the time we found out the distress that people were in, it cost us seventy-seven thousand to move them out of an uninhabitable location. And so, we just, and we realized there were other concerns there because the building had other problems, but they lived in that condition for several months and it would have been far better for all of us had water and power let us know the minute they were going to cut off the utilities.
Water and Power has agreed to send to us a shut-off list. And the shut-off list consists of three, two notices and then the actual shut-off. They'll send out the first notice and post it to all doors and the residents and then twenty-one days later, they'll post a second shut-off notice and then five days thereafter, they are scheduled to actually do the shut-off. What we're trying, what we agree with the water and power is that if there's a potential shut-off, they will work with, as long as they're working with the Housing Department, they will hold that shut-off until we get a resolution to that.
Now, we also had a question about voluntary, when you mentioned earlier, if a person that is in the building as a tenant, they must voluntarily participate in the program?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, if they choose not to, then what are the results there?
That's the rub.
What's that?
Then that's the issue there. That's why we have our rent ESCO account, outreach contractors, community organizers, tenant advocates who go out there, encourage them to advise them prior to the shut-off that they should pay their rent into this utility maintenance program.
Alright. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That is our last speaker. We can please prepare the roll on this item and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
That is approved. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Mr. President, just for the record on item number twenty-eight, the salary recommendation was two-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-nine-hundred-forty-five dollars. That needed to be into the record.
Thank you. We'll make sure that's in the record. And we'll now go and close session in accordance with California state law for legal matters that are before the city council. If we take any action requiring a public vote, we'll be doing that as soon as we come out of our private closed session. I want to thank everybody who came in today and we will be back on Channel thirty-five after we finish that and we'll reopen council chambers then. Thank you all and if we could clear the council chambers. Thank you.[1244.63]
Okay, we're back in open session. We took no action that requires public discussion or vote, so next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
And that clears the desk.
Okay, any business announcements? Council meeting time, committee meeting times, anything? Okay, if not, can I ask everybody, please rise for adjourning motions. And I'd like to recognize Mr. Rosendahl.
Mr. President, Georgia Anderson passed away last Saturday unexpectedly and just suddenly. And she was living in Modesta at the time, and she was only 73 years old. Her daughter Cindy Hench is a great constituent of mine in Westchester, who's been engaged in every aspect of community, including safety issues, police-related issues, and she is an example of what Georgia Anderson has done on this world for us before she left us. She was a very giving and loving person. Georgia worked as a teacher's aide while her kids were in school. She loved to play the piano. She was a mother of everyone in her neighborhood. Her house was the home where everyone felt welcomed. A loving wife, a wonderful mother, a great-grandma, and an adoring friend. She will be missed by her family and extended family. She's survived by her husband Jerry Kisher, her daughter Cindy Hench, and Linda Prater, a son David Anderson, and her former husband Elward Anderson. And as her daughter just told me a little bit ago, when God called her, she jumped out of her bed and went right to heaven. May she rest in peace.
Thank you. Ms. Zahn.
President Sally Cranmer-Grammer, passed away July 7th, was a dancer and actress who performed under the name Sally Sullivan, four-time president of Tarzana Women's Republican Club, held that title at the time of her passing, mother of Frasier, star Kelsey Grammer, Emmy Award actor. She will be deeply missed by her family and friends. She's survived by her sons Kelsey Grammer and three grandchildren Spencer Mason and Jude. May Sally Grammer rest in peace. Passed away July 10th, Rose Circo, born August 12, 1920, in Italy. After moving from New York, she and her husband Paul moved to Woodland Hills, where they lived for 48 years. Passed away in, Paul passed away in 2000, Rose remained in their home until her passing. She was known for her quick wit and for her love of family and friends. She'll be greatly missed. Survived by two sons Paul and Gary, her granddaughter Melissa Lee Ken, two sisters Mary and Jean, as well as a wide circle of nieces, nephews, and good friends. May she rest in peace, Rose Circo. And my third and final adjourning motion is for Gerald Wigwiggins, passed away July 13th, born May 12, 1922, in New York. Studied classical piano from the age of four, he did so reluctantly. Was a jazz pianist, whose long career embraced numerous recordings with his trio, performance with Louis Armstrong, Benny Carter, Roy Eldridge, Zoot Sims, accompanied for Lena Horn and Nat King Cole, and vocal coaching for Marilyn Monroe. Longtime resident of Woodland Hills, be missed by all who knew him, survived by his wife Lynn, who he married in 1987, his children Sandra Lee and other family relatives. May he rest in peace, Gerald Wigwiggins.
Thank you, Ms. Zahn. If no other adjourning motions, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? Will next be in session this Friday, that is the 18th of July. Thank you for all our Channel 35 viewers and those who came in as part of their day here in council chambers. This meeting, the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned. Have a great day. Bye-bye.